Thank you and welcome. Role call, please.
Yes, President Peng.
Here.
Mr. Ramon.
Here.
Mr. Sheik.
Here.
Ms. White.
Here.
Mr. Moen Patel.
Present.
Mr. Boral Patel.
Here.
Mr. Schneider.
Here.
Mr. Rivera.
Here.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Here.
You have a corner.
Thank you. Opening statement.
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Public Law 1975, C-231 Sunshine Law, copies of this public meeting notice were sent to the Home News Tribune and the Star and Ledger on January 3rd and March 30th, 2023. Members of the public may participate at irregular meetings in accordance with the bylaws of the Board and applicable state laws.
Thank you. Now we have the presentation. We have our recognition night. Ms...
We're going to show them. We're going to show a brief video.
Okay.
I am thrilled to announce that Ms. Judy McQuillan has been named EELC's Preschool Teacher of the Year. She establishes a wonderful rapport with each of her students and their families, guiding each of her students to be well-prepared socially, emotionally, and academically. Ms. Judy's dynamic approach to student learning has captured the hearts and minds of her students, and her dedication to creating a safe and nurturing and inclusive environment has made a significant impact on the lives of all of her students. Her unwavering commitment to her students' success has earned her this distinction. Ms. Judy, thank you for all that you do. You are an inspiration to us, and we are grateful for your outstanding efforts in our school. Congratulations on this well-deserved recognition.
What inspires me, my kids, my students, my peeps, inspire me every single day. I am a good observer, and when you observe the children, you can learn so much from them. And truthfully, over the years, I've probably learned as much from the children as they have learned from me. It's just, I'm blessed to have a job I love, and I come to work every day, and I'm just happy. This is my happy place, believe it or not. This is my happy place.
It is my deep pleasure to announce Ms. Mary Lombardi has been named EELC's Preschool Educational Support Professional of the Year. She is skilled at meeting the needs of all of our young children and shows a deep dedication for helping their young minds grow and learn every single minute that she is with them. Ms. Mary's commitment to creating a safe, nurturing, and inclusive environment has earned her the respect and admiration of her colleagues and the greater school community. Her passion for early childhood education, coupled with the deep understanding of the developmental needs of young children, makes her an asset to our school. Ms. Mary, congratulations on this well-deserved honor, and thank you for your outstanding contributions to our school.
When I think of what I look for in a teacher, I think of intelligence, resourcefulness, the ability to engage children in high-level academics, a sense of humor, and of course, warmth, nurturing, and caring. Mrs. Christine Toth is exactly that. Just like Mary Poppins, she's practically perfect in every way. Mrs. Toth creates exciting lessons to engage all students. Her lessons allow students to learn and grow and relate their educational experiences to the real world. She has written gifted and talented curriculum for the district in order to expand and reach the lower elementary grades. You can sense that Mrs. Toth is teaching a lesson in a classroom as you approach her doorway, no matter where she is in the building, because you will hear the sound of children collaborating and debating. You will hear their mighty grunts when they realize that they have failed, and you will hear their cheers of joy when they meet with success. Mrs. Toth is a joy on every level, as a teacher, as a staff member, as a person. I am honored to call Christine Toth, Woodbrook Elementary School's Teacher of the Year. Congratulations, Mrs. Toth.
I don't know if there's one favorite memory, but I do love when the kids come back, and you know, they're going off to college, or they're just starting high school, and they come back and they see me and they tell me how great a time they had in one of my classes or something that they remembered about me. So it's always nice to see how far the students have come and where they're going with their lives.
Congratulations to Amy Bruno, our social worker here at Woodbrook, for being nominated as the Educational Services Professional of the Year for the 2022-2023 school year. This award is a testament to her hard work, dedication, and unwavering commitment to our school community. Her tireless efforts have had a positive impact on countless students and families, and she serves as an inspiration to us all. Congratulations, Amy, on this well-deserved recognition, and we wish you continued success on all your future endeavors.
The Washington School community is proud to name Ms. Alexandra Mendoza as our Teacher of the Year. Mrs. Mendoza is a dedicated educator who is highly regarded by our families and staff. She has developed strong relationships with our families, and they continue to seek her out even after their students have left her classroom. They know that Mrs. Mendoza is an advocate for all her students and will help families every way possible. As a colleague, Mrs. Mendoza is superior. She's a collaborator and is always seeking to learn more and improve her craft. She can be counted on to help out at family nights, school events, and PTO events. As we prepare to launch our dual-language program at Washington School, Mrs. Mendoza was the obvious choice as our Spanish-speaking homeroom teacher. Her passion for teaching and enthusiasm in the classroom set her apart from the rest. The Washington School community is grateful for Mrs. Mendoza and all she does for our students and staff.
So ever since I can remember, I always wanted to be a teacher, but I can say that my third-grade teacher was like my biggest inspiration. So I'm from Jersey City, a very urban area, and she just was so good at reaching out to like those families that were in need and especially students that we needed a little bit more support and help. She was just always there, like not even inside of school, but just all around, like the community and involved. And we always saw her, so I just always wanted to be that person for like my future student.
Congratulations to Andrea Ingram, Washington's Educational Services Professional, for this year. Nurse Andrea has been with the district since 2015 and with the Washington family since May of 2018. She's known for her unwavering dedication to our students and our staff. She takes pride in maintaining a clean, organized, and efficient health office. She'll put a smile on your face with her positive bedside manner. Thank you, Nurse Andrea, for all you do for all of us here at Washington School.
It is my honor to introduce Jennifer Thompson, this year's recipient of Teacher of the Year. When I asked students to describe their teacher in one word, this is what they said. Their teacher is positive, amazing, respectful, caring, lovable, and kind. Ms. Thompson, are these words and much, much more. Thank you, Mrs. Thompson, for all you do. We are so happy to have you here with us, and congratulations for Teacher of the Year.
So personally, I've had so many wonderful teachers in my own life, from elementary up through college, so I've always had a lot of really special role models. And then in my own family, I have numerous teachers. I have aunts and uncles and a brother-in-law who are all teachers. And then going back in my own family history, I have a teacher, her name is Vera Swift, who taught in a rural one-room schoolhouse in the late 1800s. And I have her old plan book, so that's kind of a neat connection that I have.
I am proud to introduce Martin Luther King Elementary School's Educational Support Professional of the Year, Mrs. Erica Carole, our district interventionist. Mrs. Carole is a passionate, supportive educator that can always be counted on by colleagues and students alike. She is an incredible asset to our school community, and we want to thank her for all she does, both in and outside of her classroom. Congratulations, Mrs. Carole.
I'm here to represent Marissa McIntyre from Menlo Park School. Marissa does an amazing job. She's been teaching for about 15 years. She started her career as a classroom teacher. In the last few years, she's transitioned over to being a PE teacher, and she's been with us for about three years. She cares about the kids. She helps motivate them. She's a fitness enthusiast. And most recently, she brought to our school where she asked us to donate shoes in all sizes, sneakers, so that on any given day, if a child forgets and is wearing sandals or doesn't have the appropriate footwear, we could go to her shoe locker, much like you would do in a bowling alley, and students are able to borrow sneakers so that they can participate in gym. She goes above and beyond every day, and I couldn't wish her enough happiness and success. Congratulations on being Teacher of the Year, Marissa McIntyre.
When I was in high school, I was a dance instructor part-time at my local studio, and I taught pre-K through elementary school. I left school early. I was on a work program. And that's when I decided that I loved working with kids, and it was just a great background to have, kind of instilled the fact that I loved teaching, but later helped me kind of go into my passion more so.
With her unwavering dedication and compassion, Ms. Renee Klein has transformed the lives of many students. Her commitment to fostering a positive learning environment is unparalleled, ensuring that every child feels supported and empowered. From coordinating personalized education plans to advocating for students, to supporting teachers, Ms. Klein goes above and beyond, leaving an indelible mark on our school community. Thank you, Ms. Klein, for all you do and the invaluable impact you make each and every day at Menlo Park.
If you've ever been to Lyndon Al School in the last five years, and you've seen a tall, bearded man walking around with a guitar, little children in tow, laughing gleefully behind him, no, it's not the Pied Piper. It's our very own Mr. Amon Malef, and we are proud to say he is our Lyndon Al Teacher of the Year. Mr. Malef has been at Lyndon Al School for the past five years. He loves literacy, educating his young Lyndon Al learners, telling jokes, singing the occasional off-tune song, and making sure that his students leave every day inspired to come back the next day and reach their fullest potential. We are extremely proud to have Mr. Malef here at Lyndon Al School, and we are even more proud to know that he is exemplifying all that is good about education, and he is our Teacher of the Year. Congratulations, Amon Malef.
This is my fifth year at Lyndon Al, and I've had the benefit of seeing these kids grow. Being a first-grade teacher, seeing them grow through each grade. So it's been awesome being able to stay in touch with these kids and their families, and they'll see me in the hallway and want to talk about something that I can't even remember that we did in first grade, but it made them laugh or it made them, I don't know, made them feel some type of way. So they still remember that, and them bringing up those memories, you know, really makes me like, realize that the impression that I have on these kids is really lasting.
We are honored to share that Demanjit Kara is our Educational Support Professional of the Year. From the moment she walked through the door at Lyndon Al Elementary School, she has been such an amazing addition. From bringing our students' daily morning affirmations to introducing them to new cultures through holiday celebrations and read-alouds, we are so proud to announce that Ms. Kara is our Educational Support Professional of the Year. Congratulations.
Mrs. Bayoun is an integral part of Lincoln Elementary School. Mrs. Bayoun constantly incorporates best practices for our MLLs by cultivating a strong sense of community within her classes and challenging learners to apply language skills across engaging topics, content areas, and being culturally responsive throughout instruction. Her students are constantly challenged and supported as they begin their understanding of the English language. She views diversity as a strength and always capitalizes on the differences within her classroom. She continues to be a model teacher in our building. She has made strong connections to all her families, community outreach programs, and completes all the ESL screenings for new students. It is with great pleasure that I proudly announce Mrs. Bayoun, Lincoln Elementary School's Teacher of the Year. Congratulations.
So I think one of my favorite memories was during COVID, even though it was a tough time for everyone, being able to visit the students at their homes. I did do some home visits, and I got to meet the kids for the first time online. And when I went to their homes to really meet them and see them, it just really felt like a good connection. And you know, the parents were so appreciative. It's something that I really value as a teacher, to make connections with families. And it really felt like it all came together when I saw them at their homes.
Mrs. Pacheco, or better known as Nurse Jackie, is in charge of the health and wellbeing of over 1,000 students and staff. Even with her extremely busy schedule, she is compassionate, caring, and continuously goes above and beyond. Nurse Jackie successfully piloted our vision screener. She screened 938 students, which resulted in 139 vision referrals. 98 students returned with proper vision treatment. 54 students referred would have resulted in long-term vision loss if left untreated. For this and hundreds of other reasons, she is our Education Service Professional of the Year.
John Marshall School is proud to announce that Samantha Rondanon was selected their 2022-2023 Teacher of the Year. Mrs. Rondanon has been a teacher at John Marshall School for seven years. She is always enthusiastic, creative, and encouraging to anyone who comes into contact with her. Teachers play a pivoted role in the life of each and every student. For many of our learners, Mrs. Rondanon is one of the first faces they meet. She has a contagious smile that puts everyone's mind at ease. Mrs. Rondanon is an ESL teacher at John Marshall School who is also fluent in French. She is always willing to translate for parents and guardians or drop off materials for students. Mrs. Rondanon is an active member of the John Marshall community. She runs many school-wide events, inviting parents and guardians into the building to celebrate their child's progress. When selecting trips or activities, Mrs. Rondanon always looks for programs that are interactive and inclusive for all learners. Congratulations, Mrs. Rondanon, for being John Marshall School's Teacher of the Year.
As an ESL teacher, I really love the connections and the relationships I go with my students. You know, every morning, they see me out on bus duty. They're like, "Mrs. Rondanon, do we have class today? Can I come to your class?" And so that's really good to, you know, make them want to come to my classroom. And then also, I have a lot of students that are now in high school that actually still email me, and they check in. So I'm like, that's really cool that I pop into their mind and like, hey, let me email Mrs. Rondanon and see how she's doing. So that makes it all worth it.
John Marshall School has selected Jessica Rodriguez as our Educational Services Professional of the Year. As our school counselor, Ms. Rodriguez teaches SEL lessons to our learners and is a wonderful resource for staff, parents, and students. She has a unique way of changing a learner's frame upside down. Ms. Rodriguez coordinates our IRRS meetings and is also an advisor for our diversity club and our student council. These are just a few of the reasons Jessica Rodriguez is deserving of this reward. Congratulations.
We are thrilled to announce that Mr. Mark Osowski, affectionately known as Mr. O by his students at James Monroe, has been awarded the Teacher of the Year for 2023. This exceptional educator has truly gone above and beyond to inspire and educate his students, and we are so proud to have him as part of our team. Mr. O's commitment to his students' success is truly remarkable. He is a genuine and innovative teacher who builds strong relationships with his students, empowering them to take ownership of their learning. We are incredibly grateful for Mr. Osowski's contributions to our school community. His willingness to take a pie in the face to motivate students for a student council food drive is just one example of his commitment to his students. Please join us in congratulating Mr. Osowski on this well-deserved honor.
All my role models, growing up, were either like named coach or Mr. and Mrs. because they were teachers. So I felt that I wanted to be a role model for, you know, the current generation of students because I had so many great ones that were either teachers or coaches.
Ms. Francine Pikowitz, or what we here at James Monroe affectionately call her as Ms. Francine, is an incredible asset to our community. It was no surprise when she was nominated to be our Educational Support Professional of the Year. Ms. Francine is flexible and helps anyone she comes across, always goes above and beyond what is asked of her and works well with all of the staff members, and she creates lasting relationships with her students. She has a gentle nature and adapts her approach in different situations in order to best support each child she works with. She starts and ends her day with a smile on her face. We are honored to have Ms. Francine, not only a part of our school community, but as our ESP of the Year. Congratulations.
It is an absolute privilege to introduce you to Ms. Olivia Lupino, who from her initial interview to this day has gone above and beyond to ensure that every child in her class receives the education that they deserve, regardless of their abilities. She has also collaborated with her fellow colleagues around the building to ensure that the same occurs in their classrooms. During Autism Awareness Month, she put together a variety of activities and also included her presentation to ensure that every student in this building learned that everybody has different abilities and that anybody can learn regardless of those abilities, and that each child is unique. She has also worked with her teammates to put together our Coffee Card, which allows her students and other students in the building to work on social skills in a world-life setting. We are beyond fortunate to have Ms. Lupino here at JMP, and she is what makes JMD great.
I think my real inspiration stems from my cousin Brian. He has Down Syndrome. And through him, I got involved with Special Olympics, where I met a ton of incredible individuals. And through that, I just realized, like, this is what I feel really passionate about and what I love. And I felt like it was something that I was meant to do. So I do feel like super lucky that I get to say I feel like I have one of the best jobs, which is being a special ed teacher.
At this time, I would like to introduce Amy Rose as the Support Staff of the Year. I would kind of call her the Michael Jordan of the reading specialist world. She is kind, she is compassionate, and most of all, she cares about her students, and she instills in them the value of education. Congratulations, Ms. Amy. We love you.
Good evening. I am thrilled to recognize Mr. Cal Hackworth as James Madison Intermediate School Teacher of the Year. Mr. Hackworth sets high expectations for his students and himself. He makes it his mission to get to know his students on a personal level and uses those connections to help them reach their fullest potential by helping them discover their passions through his many project-based learning experiences. Mr. Hackworth is willing to try anything to help his students, and the term "work hours" do not apply to him. Mr. Hackworth goes above and beyond to instill a love of learning in his students. He is also an instrumental member of our school community by advising some of our most popular clubs. When club registration tripled in size, Mr. Hackworth quickly revamped the structure so more students could participate. This is just one of many examples of how Mr. Hackworth always puts the children first. Mr. Hackworth is loved by his students and respected by his colleagues. Congratulations, Mr. Hackworth, on being our Teacher of the Year.
The great thing about teaching is that every day brings new memories. So every year, there's definitely a few that are at the top of the list. My favorite memory of all of teaching is definitely after remote learning, where the students that were online came and met us for the first time in person. And just to see their smiles in person and get to talk to them in person, that just kind of like, you know, made you feel really good about what you did every day. So that was a very uplifting experience. That's definitely something I'm gonna, you know, take with me for the rest of the career.
I am honored to recognize Ms. Deidre Coyle, JMI's Library Assistant, as the Educational Support Professional of the Year. Ms. Coyle has become a cornerstone in the JMI community and is always helping to maintain the positive school climate. Ms. Coyle always ensures that the books that students are interested in reading are front and center, and she even uses her own time and resources in implementing exciting, hands-on, maker space activities. At evening events, you could bet Ms. Coyle is in the crowd showing her support for JMI students and that her commitment doesn't end at the end of the school day. Congratulations, Ms. Coyle, for being JMI's Educational Support Professional of the Year and making the JMI library a real page-turner.
It is with great pleasure and pride that I introduce to you Benjamin Franklin's Teacher of the Year, Ms. Ashley Miller. Ms. Miller started her teaching career here at BEN as a first-grade teacher, but quickly took on the challenge of transitioning into kindergarten to support our littlest friends in a full-time kindergarten experience. She is incredibly passionate, dedicated, and has the most amazing heart. If you're lucky, you're gonna be able to catch Ms. Miller tap-dancing through her way through Ben Franklin's hallways. Thanks, Ms. Miller, for everything that you do. We are so proud of your accomplishment and so proud to have you as a member of the Ben Franklin staff.
So I think I've known for a while that I wanted to be a teacher. My mom was a preschool teacher, so I had many years growing up with early childhood education. So it's just been a part of my life for so long, and I think I aspired to be like my mom and do what she had done.
I would like to congratulate Rebecca Antab as our 22-23 Educational Support Professional. Ms. Antab, we are so thankful for you. As one of our speech pathologists, thank you for all that you do throughout the school day and for all of your help on beautification and many other committees. We are so proud of you. Congratulations.
It is my great pleasure to recognize Ms. Bianca Silva as FDR's Preschool Teacher of the Year. She is skilled at supporting students and finding ways of motivating them to reach their potential. Ms. Bianca works hard to support every single student to be successful as a whole person. She is involved in multiple school-wide committees and goes above and beyond to ensure that every child's needs are met. She works hard to promote academic excellence, fosters creativity, and instills a lifelong love of learning in all of her students. Ms. Bianca, you are an inspiration to us all, and we are grateful for the incredible work that you do every single day. Congratulations on this well-deserved honor.
So I don't think I can just choose one memory, but definitely the biggest one that stands out to me is having parents tell me that their child loves coming to school, whether they're verbal or nonverbal. As soon as they put on their backpacks, they're so excited to come.
I am honored to announce Ms. Harnet Kaur Patel has been named as the Educational Support Professional of the Year at FDR. Her unwavering dedication and exceptional skills have made a profound impact on the countless young lives that we have here at our school. She connects with families, and she has a passion for teaching and ability to connect with young children. It's truly remarkable. She cares deeply for every child that crosses her path and supports them in their growth and development with patience, warm smiles, and encouragement. Ms. Harnet, congratulations on this well-deserved honor, and thank you for being a cornerstone at FDR.
Congratulations to Mrs. Nicole Machetti, Woodrow Wilson Middle School's Teacher of the Year. Her enthusiasm for all things Woodrow has not waned since she herself was a student at WWMS. Besides her day job of creatively teaching sixth-grade math, she is our cheerleading coach, co-track coach, director of the school play, and a co-advisor of the Woodrow Welcomers Club. Ms. Machetti never misses an opportunity to support her fellow colleagues or her students. If you Google Teacher of the Year, I believe you will see a picture of Ms. Machetti. For all these reasons and many more, For all these reasons and many more, we are so happy to announce Mrs. Nicole Machetti as our Teacher of the Year.
My favorite memory from teaching is from my very first year when my students were just working and I stopped and looked around the classroom and had a moment where I just realized like this is exactly where I want to be, this is exactly where I should be. And it made it even more special that I am teaching at Woodrow Wilson where I went as a student, so it's really come full circle and I get to be working with and surrounded by some of the teachers that inspired me.
Congratulations to Jeff Toby, Woodrow Wilson Middle School's ESP Professional of the Year. Mr. Toby is our Speech Language Pathologist. Mr. Toby is always willing to take on extra tasks and lend a helping hand whenever it is needed. Mr. Toby is dedicated professional and a role model to the entire school community. Congratulations on your prestigious award.
I'm honored to recognize Ms. Deidre Pasquarelli as Thomas Jefferson Middle School's 2022-23 Teacher of the Year. For 27 years, Ms. Pasquarelli has inspired and guided students in the orchestra program. She has exceptional skills in teaching, conducting, and mentoring and is able to bring out the best in each and every student in her music program. Daily, she communicates with her students the importance of practicing their skills and achieving excellence. Ms. Pasquarelli truly creates a positive and inclusive learning environment where students feel supported and encouraged to express themselves musically. She is dedicated to each student's growth and development and instills in her learners a love of music that will last a lifetime. She also inspires students to pursue their musical passions with confidence and joy. On behalf of the entire Thomas Jefferson Middle School community, I offer my heartfelt congratulations to Ms. Pasquarelli for this well-deserved recognition.
You know, all teachers are, you know, required to do their parent-teacher conferences. You know, one of my sixth graders didn't sign up for a conference, so, you know, I addressed the student and said, oh, you know, your parents didn't sign up for a conference. And they said, oh, Mrs. Pasquarelli, they're like, they only want to see the main teachers. And I said, main teachers? They said, what do you mean, like the main teachers, you know, like English and math? And I said, main, I said, you know, so-and-so, I said, I just want to let you know, I am a main teacher. You don't know that, but I am very, very main. I consider myself, and he says to me, I know, Mrs. Pasquarelli, I think you're a main teacher, but my parents, they only want to see the main teachers. Just a little funny story about the main.
A very special congratulations to Mrs. Deanna Hart, our Educational Services Professional of the Year. Mrs. Hart is a learning disabilities teacher consultant and the heart of the LLD program here at Thomas Jefferson Middle School. In this role, she has helped to revamp and expand the Jaguar Den, has assisted in time community-based trips to important life schools, and has co-sponsored Project Unified, an extracurricular club that provides opportunities for special education and general education students to interact with one another and build positive relationships. In all that she does, she exhibits an unwavering commitment to her school and community. Mrs. Hart is a tremendous asset to our school, a beloved colleague, and is truly well-deserving of the Educational Services Professional of the Year Award. Congratulations to Jeff and Mrs. Hart.
Congratulations to Ms. Katie Queenen, the John Adams Middle School Teacher of the Year. Her students describe her as a great teacher who's not only fun, but also funny. Her colleagues gravitate toward her talent, creativity, and leadership. She's everybody's friend and everybody's favorite party planner. I am honored and proud of Katie for all of her accomplishments. I'm also extremely grateful to have her as an established teacher at John Adams Middle School. She truly is what makes John Adams jemazing. Congratulations once again and thank you for all you do.
My mom has been in education for a lot of my life as a para, so she's worked with special needs students for a really long time and I've seen kind of the inner workings of that and I loved that, but also, especially with math, a lot of kids don't like it and middle school is such an age where you either take those kids with you and they become a math person or they're like, no, absolutely not, I'm gonna hate math forever. And so I like being able to hopefully impact them positively and get them to love math.
It is an honor to present Ms. Suman Jasnani, the Educational Support Professional of the Year Award at John Adams Middle School. Ms. Jasnani is an outstanding professional whose patience and calm demeanor are a great addition to the classroom. She has shown time and again her willingness to do anything she can to help her students succeed. Ms. Jasnani is humble and never seeks recognition for the good that she does every day. Therefore, it is our pleasure to recognize her for this award. We are fortunate to have Ms. Jasnani as part of our JAM staff. Congratulations on a much deserved honor.
As the principal of Herbert Hoover Middle School, I'm proud to recognize our band teacher, Mr. Joseph Cunningham, as the 2022-2023 Teacher of the Year. Mr. Cunningham is a dedicated and passionate educator whose life mission is to share his love of music with his students. World-renowned musician Bono once said, "Music can change the world because it can change people." Those who know Mr. Cunningham will certainly attest to the impact he has on his students. Through music, Mr. Cunningham is changing the world one child at a time. Beyond the classroom, Mr. Cunningham is a professional musician, a dedicated father, and a proud husband. I say proud because on the day I informed Mr. Cunningham of his recognition, I did not think he could be any happier. That was until he returned to my office later in the day to inform me that his wife, who teaches in another school district, was also being honored as her school's Teacher of the Year. Congratulations, Mr. and Mrs. Cunningham.
People love music before they ever think about teaching it and it's just something I've always wanted to share with students. As I was a middle school musician, a high school musician, I really loved the camaraderie and I loved like everybody working towards a common goal, everybody trying to be something better than just what they could produce on their own. So I've always wanted to just share that with kids.
It's an honor for me to present Herbert Hoover Middle School's Educational Services Professional of the Year Award to Ms. Laura Williams. As our school counselor, Ms. Williams currently works closely with our sixth graders and the eighth graders in the ACES program. Her caring and dedication to the children is evident in her day-to-day interactions with our scholars. Ms. Williams also serves as the head counselor at Hoover. She oversees the guidance department and ensures that all scholars, staff, and parents' needs are supported. She treats all aspects of her job with tremendous attention to detail. Ms. Williams is thorough and quick to respond to the needs of the Hoover community. Ms. Williams is a consummate professional and we are fortunate to have her as part of the Hoover community. Congratulations, Ms. Williams.
We are excited to recommend Ms. DiMatia for the John P. Stevens High School Teacher of the Year. Ms. DiMatia started her teaching career at JP in 2008 and is a JP alumni. As a family and consumer sciences teacher in our building, she wears many hats, teaching our culinary arts, financial literacy, sewing and construction, as well as preschool courses throughout her teaching career. She developed the current preschool program where members of our community are able to send their preschool-aged children to our high school and our high school students are taught the skills to teach the preschool students. This is such a popular program that we have wait lists for preschool students to attend and high school students to be a part of the course. Ms. DiMatia is also the building advisor for our FCCLA Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America co-curricular program with more than 200 involved students. She supports students as they participate in local, regional, state, and national competitions as well as provides opportunities for our students to give back to their school community. Again, we are so honored to have her as a colleague and a part of our school community. Congratulations to Ms. DiMatia for being JP's Teacher of the Year.
It was a long time ago when I was teaching Foundation of Food and Nutrition and we were talking about quick breads and we were learning about the reactions with baking soda and baking powder, what makes pancakes and muffins rise, and all of a sudden he goes, we learned about this in chemistry. And I said, yes, it is chemistry. And it was just really cool, that light bulb went off and he was able to make the connections between this class and the other class and, you know, how our world is connected. So I thought that was really cool.
Mr. Steven Miller is a leader in the John P. Stevens Counselor Department. Early each morning, you can find him working hard writing college recommendation letters, preparing for meetings, or finding ways to improve the social, emotional well-being of his students. His colleagues describe Mr. Miller as a creative thinker who goes above and beyond to assist him with technology. He keeps the community informed by volunteering to lead parent presentations. Additionally, he's our co-advisor of the JP Stevens Hall, the assistant AP coordinator, and also serves as liaison for military recruiters. It's a pleasure working with Mr. Miller as he's professional and diligent as work. He's a role model for our students and I'm honored that he's been elected our Educational Support Staff Member of the Year.
At Edison High School, we have a saying, once an eagle, always an eagle. Nobody epitomizes more than Ms. Danielle Andriano, our Teacher of the Year for the 2022-2023 school year. Over 20 years ago, she left the nest as a graduate, but she came back right after college and for over a decade, she's been working at helping students understand math. She's been a cheerleader coach, she's been a class advisor, she's still one of the co-advisors of the National Honor Society. She's able to take every student and find a way to make that math accessible to them and all the time doing it with a smile and helping to maintain that what's great about Edison High School attitude. We're so proud of her and just wish her all the best, especially with her new baby.
On behalf of Edison High School, I'd like to congratulate our 2023 ESP recipient, our athletic trainer, Tim Root. Tim's our go-to man here at the Eagles' Nest for any athletic injuries, preventative injuries, inventory control, and I can't think of anybody better that symbolizes the red and gold than Tim. So congratulations, Tim, well deserved. Thanks for everything you do for our student families.
Now let's have Ms. Berninda Mojabia and Ms. Gil Polakowski start the show.
Good evening, everyone. Over the last three years, we in education since the pandemic have said, oh my goodness, this was the hardest year of our career. Hopefully, we won't be saying that next year, but this year was definitely one of those years as our teachers not only had to teach content but had to kind of mitigate the COVID pandemic, the social-emotional skills that the students had to then pick up and learn to be humans and to be kind to each other and how to navigate disagreements with each other. The people you saw up on the video earlier and will be seeing in just a minute are an example of a few of our very amazing teachers here in Edison. We are very lucky to have an amazing staff here and that makes us amazing. So we thank all of you, those that are here tonight and those that are at home, for making our district so beautiful. I'm going to be calling up our administrators from each school to please honor our teachers and our educational support professionals of the year. So please come up to the front and be honored when you hear your name. First up, our Educator of the Year from Benjamin Franklin Middle School and our Educational Service Professional from Benjamin Franklin Middle School, presented by Dr. Bavir and Dr. Yanarbas, is Ashley Miller and Rebecca Antab.
Next up, from James Madison Intermediate School, we have Mr. Cal Hackworth and Deidre Coyle, presented by Mrs. Abbott Marco and Mr. Murfield.
From James Madison Primary School, we have Olivia Lupino and Amy Rose, presented by Mr. Seiler.
From John Marshall Elementary School, Samantha Rondanona and Jessica Rodriguez, presented by Mrs. Hoffman and Ms. Delina.
From Lincoln Elementary School, we have Dana Baun and Jacqueline Pacheco, who couldn't be here tonight, presented by Mr. Scully and Ms. Defazio.
From Lindonau Elementary School, Amon Malev and Damanjit Kara, presented by Mr. Platt
From Menlo Park Elementary School, we have Marissa McIntyre and Renee Klein, presented by Mr. Duggan and Ms. Feldman.
From Martin Luther King Elementary School, we have Jennifer Thompson and Erica Caroli,
From Washington Elementary School, we have Alexandra Mendoza, Andrea Ingram, presented by Sandra Schlatter and Ms. Vu.
From Woodbrook Elementary School, we have Ms. Toth and Amy Bruno, presented by Ms. Cirillo. And apparently, I miss James Monroe. So from James Monroe, we have Mark Osowski and Francine Pajkowicz, presented by Ms.
At Herbert Hoover Middle School, we have Joseph Cunningham and Laura Williams, presented
From John Adams Middle School, we have Katie Queenen and Suman Jasnani, presented by Dr.
From Thomas Jefferson Middle School, we have Deidre Pasquarelli and Deanna Hart, presented
And from Woodrow Wilson Middle School, we have Nicole Machetti and Jeffrey Toby, presented
From Edison High School, we have Danielle Andriano and Timothy Root, presented by Mr.
From John P. Stevens High School, we have Nicole DiMaddia and Steven Miller, presented
And last but not least, we have both schools together, EELC and FDR. So there are four people coming up, presented by Dr. Tuwi, and that is Judy McCullen, Mary
We have concluded with this year. We look forward to our next Teachers of the Year and we want to say thank you to all of our staff members for making this place a wonderful place to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Berninda. So yeah, this is the first year we're fully in person after the pandemic. And as a daughter whose parents are both lifetime teachers and as a parent, as a mom whose two children are going through our school system right now, I know and I can, I see how much our educators have done this past year to help my, help our children to bring back the normal and bring back the no, the regular school life. The passion you have for this career, the responsibility, responsibility that you take every second on the job, the dedication you put in every day, day in and day out, and most importantly, the love you give to our students. I have just two words, thank you. And one more, congratulations. Thank you. Dr. Adara, you have yours?
Thank you, Ms. Pang. You know, these, these last two meetings are one of the most exciting meetings of the year. You know, the opportunity for us to not only recognize our staff, but in June, our students as well. I echo the comments and accolades that have been given by our administrative team. I, I know that I speak on behalf of the board as well as the entire central office staff when I say congratulations to all the recipients. You do the most important work for our children each and every day and it's a pleasure and a privilege to call you colleagues and I thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Adara. I think right now we would have five, 10 minutes break, give the, you know, if you ever need to leave and then we'll resume the meeting in 10 minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's resume. I would have, I want to make a request in these young kids here. I'd like to make a motion so, to open it to a public comments for these kids first so they can make their comments and go home maybe.
Yeah, Madam President, so thank you. I'd like to introduce the Edison's Area Drone Team. So, take away. So we changed the agenda so you guys can do this first and so you can go home. I know you're gonna have a lot of homework tomorrow. Introduce, introduce your team.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. President and Jary Shi. Thanks all the board members, parents, community, teachers, and definitely our precious students for giving this opportunity. Today I am grateful and proud to announce that our team won the National Area Drone Competition at West Virginia. Students of Edison School not only represented New Jersey State in the National Drone Competition versus West Virginia, but sweeping away three awards out of all the 62 teams which were competing against those. So I think big kudos to the, all the students of Edison School. And few, few minutes back, we were recognizing all the teachers. So I think there are nuts and bolts from teachers too on those students which made that happen in the world of robotics. Let me put some stats in perspective so that we know what they have achieved. There are 62 teams participate in the National Area Drone Competition across the different states. Total of 13 states participated and represented their different teams in the aerial drone competition. New Jersey is the second highest after the West Virginia, sweeping away three awards compared to West Virginia's seven. And I got the message today morning, because the competition was last week, today morning from the host in the West Virginia saying, "New Jersey, you did it. It's, it's very good that you, you are the first time introduce yourself in the national competition and you are kind of second in the total count of the, the awards." So what I want to share with you is not only New Jersey did it, Edison, we did it, right? So that, that's what we want to share with you guys. So, ha- having said that, right, so I just want, and thanks to the president and the board who gave an opportunity. So I just want to introduce and recognize the students who actually made this happen, made all of us proud as Edison community and the New Jersey community, right? So please join me and give a big round of applause to Queen Team is a winner of Excellence Award and Autonomous Flight Champion Award. So I introduce Sara Das, Yana Makwana, and Hia Agarwal. There is another team called the Warriors, the Winner of Judges Award, is Gori Lakhan Gawkar, Sonis Kola, Chris Keshwani, and Tiwissa Agarwal. Another team called Ravens, winner of the Excellence Award at the Pennsylvania State Competition, Harsh Nihlani, Krishna Mata, and Divya Krishna. And then another team, Arsonist and Professional Pilots, is a, they won the New Jersey State Competition and it's Rajit Sarve, Vivi Nagarwal, Vikrant Dvadwa, Rohit Singh, Aro Patel, and Gaurav Joshi. So I just want to end the, the note with the, the statement that this victory is not just about the trophies we hold as of today, but about the journey which these kids took from last six months, right? And they went with a lot of training, lot of nights and tears and sweats, what you name it, work, things working, things not working, fixing it and all. So I have seen them work so hard. So it's not just the trophy, it's a lot of achievements by them themselves and encouraging not only their peers and others, but also encouraging the, all around the, kids all around the New Jersey, right? I want to give big shout to Board President, Mrs. Pang and Principal Mrs. Abbott of Marco, who actually gave a lot of encouragement and enthusiasm to these students, right? In fact, they visited our, our facility where teams were keep practicing and giving some encouraging words and enthusiasm to those kids. And I think that's a result of what happened last weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Manish. Great job, by the way. I see you guys starting from the scratch. I mean, it's not just last six months, I would say you guys started a few years ago, right? This program and it goes so far. It's, it's our Edison own students and parents did all this. Really proud of you guys. So I'd like to go, any comments from board members?
Board President, if I may?
Uh, Mr. Moam Patel.
Yes, I just want to say congratulations to all the parents and the students actually that did win this award in the state level as well as national. So you guys did an amazing job and the parents for encouraging this type of activity where you're teaching the kids, hey, listen, you could take the risk, go beyond just the education, but you could learn on other activities as well, gaming as well as drones and so forth. So congratulations to your students and thank you to the parents for encouraging this type of activity. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yeah, Mr. Shi.
Just want to echo, congratulations to you guys. It's, it's not easy and I flew that, that drone actually and it was not, it was not easy. And also you have the robotic try to, to pick up the, you know, the cones and stuff. It's not that easy, but keep up the good work and continue to expand the, you know, the team and get more and more kids involved. Let them get away from those video games and let them get in the aerial drones or the, of the robotics. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you guys want to go up?
If you guys want to leave, feel free. So we'll just continue, resume our meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So let's get back to the regular agenda, the rest of the public, you will have your chance to speak when the comments to the public comment session. Now let's, the next item on the agenda is, uh, it's the lease purchase.
Yes, the lease.
Agreement.
Correct.
John.
Uh, today the board has issued a resolution to authorize a short-term lease of up to eight million, $18 million for the 28 classroom addition at JP Stevens High School. This will allow us to issue financing for approximately five years in a budget neutral position and more importantly allows the board to, you know, do something about the overcrowding here in Edison. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on the resolution, the lease purchase resolution only? Uh, Ms. Conway.
Elizabeth Conway, now the cost of the construction is 27.5 as far as the hard costs. What is your budget for the additional soft costs because that is not a nominal fee? I don't think it's in the 27.5, but what do you anticipate those costs to be is my question?
Contingency?
Well, all the soft costs would be...
Right, within that, within that 27.5, so the, the, our architects, DMR, created the construction plan, they built in contingency within that amount. It's, it's, it's part of the D130, it's part of the application to the...
All the stuff within...
Correct, the NJDOA, so you have...
The additional teachers?
I'm sorry?
The additional teachers, the desks?
But that's not a capital cost, teachers aren't a capital cost, that's, that's a...
It's an additional cost, I would think.
Correct. So by the time that that project is finished, which I anticipate is, let's say 18 months to 24 months, it'll be a different budget year and then we'll plan appropriately for those, those current expenses.
So you're just going to put that stuff within the regular school year budget?
That's a, that's a, that's a normal operating cost, labor's a normal operating cost, not capital outlay.
Well, you're not adding two classrooms, you're adding 28. So that's...
Correct.
A large amount, which would make a difference.
Correct, I agree. And I, what I assume is due to the overcrowding, right? We're, we're probably shifting a lot of personnel around, labor around, furniture around, and then, you know, buy furniture as, as necessary as well.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else? See now, motion to, do you have a, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to close.
Approve the purchase, uh, public, the lease purchase resolution. Do I have a motion?
Have a motion.
Mr. Vishal Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Brah Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Moam Patel?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Vice President Romano?
Yes.
President Pang?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next we have Student Council Representative, start with Ms. Serena Ahmad, Ms. Serena Ahmad. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to first just take a minute and congratulate and appreciate the educators being recognized tonight. I'm graduating soon and as someone who went to both Washington and TJ, not only did I see some familiar faces myself, but so many of the names I heard and saw in the presentation, I've heard my own friends expresses being pivotal in their schooling experience over the years. So very cool, you guys are such a large part of what makes Edison great, so thanks. As the year winds down, it's been incredibly busy but incredibly fulfilling here at the Nest. I'm encouraged to voice student concerns at these meetings so that, so, and so that we can end on a high note, I'll start by mentioning this month's concern and then I'll follow up with highlights. It's been expressed to me by some students that the school library can use some additional attention in, in terms of resources and funding. Students have expressed that books are outdated and that most fundraising is done by the library council, which is composed of students and the school's librarian. Students still love paper books and there's an express demand for an updated arrangement and assortment of books and an increase in attention for the library would not only revive student interest in reading in the library, but would also allow for increased accessibility for SAT and AP prep materials, which are expensive and not openly feasible for all students to, you know, buy on their own. The media center of, is of course used for books and is home to our esports center, which is widely used, but it's also one of the most used spaces and multipurpose spaces in the school and ultimately could just use some sprucing, so something to consider and keep on the radar. Speaking of the media center, the upcoming weeks are full of fun student-run events and initiatives that are held both in and out of the media center. Our Rotary Club is currently hosting a student-run trivia night for charity in there tonight and are preparing for their annual beach cleanup. On Thursday, the Chinese National Honor Society will be holding a multicultural fair on, and students will be presenting food, cultural songs and dances, the present, and presentations highlighting the diversity that makes Edison so special and it's always a really fun event. Also, our AP government students are working with the New Jersey Civic Center and will be hosting a voter registration drive tomorrow and Thursday, encouraging students who are 17 and eligible to register to vote. The initiative has already garnered significant student participation and they are well on their way to fulfilling their goal of registering at least 250 students by the end of the week. The drive hasn't even begun yet and we've already received a handful of ballots. In terms of community building, our choir just participated with the JP Stevens Choir in arranging the Edison Choral Festival where members of both choirs performed a selection of pieces together, practicing during collaborative weekend retreats. Students performed in the Crescent Avenue Presbyterian Church in Plainfield and the concert was a huge success. This is the first project of its kind for Edison where both choirs collaborated on pieces and sang together simultaneously. And choir directors, Mr. Listner, Mr. Lee, and Ms. McElroy look forward to maintaining the tradition for years to come and it's really, it was a wonderful experience. Overall, it's been a rewarding year and students are keeping up momentum as the year closes. Thank you all for listening and have a good night.
Thank you. Dr. Adara, I'm sure we can do something about buying, purchasing some SAT books or AP materials and...
I agree.
Provided in the library for students to use.
You got it.
Thank you. Now JP Stevens, Mr.?
Ask the question?
Oh, sure.
I'm just curious, what's the annual budget for the libraries for both high schools?
Mr. Rivera, I'll have to get back to you and I don't have that number right in front of me, but I, I will follow up with you.
I think we should do some type of book inventory and get rid of the books that are outdated and try to purchase books for our kids so they could do, do their studies.
They can use.
I completely agree with her. So we could look into seeing what the budgets are and what additional funds that we could give our kids for, for those libraries, because I think they're very important. Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Romano?
When you buy a hard copy book, I understand, but a lot of our educational programs rely on the internet and rely on people learning with their computers. I do understand that we need other avenues with our library, but years ago, we discussed we would use the internet and the educational value of the internet with the, with the literature that we have from school books. Now I do, i- if the library is in need, I'm 100% for that, but I'm only on the board a couple, three, four months now and I have never heard about the library not being efficient enough. Now, I asked the, I asked the administration or the previous administration who dropped the ball. So if that's what the problem is, that the library is inefficient, that's the first thing I've heard about and I don't know about anybody else on this board. But thank you for bringing that to our attention and I'll be talking to a, a lot of administrators tomorrow, in fact, maybe later on when the meeting's over.
Thank you. Mr. Bill Tang?
Yes, Bill Tang.
Thank you. Bill Tang.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bill Tang and I am the Recording Secretary of John P. Stevens High School. To begin, I would also like to congratulate all of the teachers who are acknowledged for their time and effort. I am also here to report on the events and happenings at my school for the month of May. I would like to start with our visual and performing arts programs. Nine students from our school were chosen as finalists for the Congressional Art Contest. Specifically, the top three finalists were from JP, making it the first, fourth year in our, in a row for our school. In May, we also had our band, choir, guitar, and dance performances, including a jazz extravaganza, a last band concert for our Mr. D Nicola, and like previously mentioned, the Edison Township Choral Fest, the Forre Requiem this past Sunday, which is again the first combined choir concert for JP and HS since 2004. JP will also be having its... JP will also be having its spring orchestra concert tomorrow. Next, I want to talk about our spring sports. Many of our teams have attended and will be attending the GMCs, including our golf team, tennis team, and track and field team. Moreover, we have hosted our senior night volleyball game with St. Joseph High School, and the white volleyball game against EHS. Two weeks ago was Teacher Appreciation Week, to show our appreciation to our teachers, we sent out thank you messages in our school magazine, The Weekly, and the morning announcements, along with raffles and snacks. In addition, Student Council hosted a Teachers Appreciation Breakfast last Friday, and had sent out candy grams as a small thank you to all of our excellent teachers this week. We will also be having a faculty barbecue to show our appreciation during May. Earlier this month, we had our AP tests and the NJ SLA testing for the freshmen and juniors. More than three-thousand-two-hundred AP exams were administered, which is twenty-three percent more than last year. JP had also participated in Take Your Child to Work Day and Pineapple Day, and Project Unified attended a Blue Claws game. Our chemistry club also attended the Chemistry Olympics competition at NJNT, with one of our teams winning first place in the determination of the percent copper in a penny event. With the testing over, the senior class had their prom this past weekend at the Edison Park. Next week, our Student Council will also be attending the NJASC Spring Awards Ceremony at Six Flags Great Adventure, as we are recognized for our contribution to the state charity and community service done in our school. As June approaches, we will be having our National Honor Society inductions, math awards, senior awards night, alumni day for juniors, and driver awareness day for seniors. On June second, JP will also be having its Battle of the Classes as Student Council's final event of the school year. And this concludes everything happening at JP Stevens High School as of today, as well as events in the near future. I thank everyone for listening, and hope everyone has a great rest of the weekend.
Thank you. Next, we have-
Any other sug-, any suggestions for the board from JP?
Yeah, any, any concerns?
Any concerns?
I would say that our library has been, is doing good, thanks to our lovely librarian. And we also have, um, many SAT-like online prep detail in our weekly magazine.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next, we have public comments for resolution only. Any? See now, I'm gonna motion, oh, oh, Ms. Conway, sorry, it's you.
I'm sorry, I just had to come tonight, I'm sure she's not gonna be happy, but I'm going to say it anyway, because I saw a name in the Personnel Section that a vital, vital part of our school district is retiring. She has been an anchor of this district, and I will never forget, one night at a function at JP Stevens, where I turned around and I said to her, because my children were at the school at the time, and I said to her, "You are everywhere, I don't get it." And she looked at me and she said, "I work here, what's your excuse?" But at that point, yes, she did work here. But rather than say she put one-hundred percent into this district, that would be only a portion of the effort that Ms. Gail Polakowski put into Edison School District. We are going to miss her, but I'm so glad for her also to be able to retire with a smile on her face. I thank you.
Doctor, okay. So, now we have a motion to end the public comments?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion to approve the personnel report?
Motion, second.
Mr. Vishal Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Uh, yes, but I will abstain from number eleven.
Abstain on eleven, noted. Mr. Brah Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Moen Patel?
Yes, but exception for Ms. Gail Polakowski's retirement.
Ms. White?
Yes, with the exception of Gail.
Mr. Shi?
Yes, but no for Chief Academic Officer. I don't, I know my vote part doesn't mean anything, but I have to say it. We appreciate.
Vice President Romano?
Yes, good job, Gail.
President Peng?
Yes, appreciate it, Gail, really.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yeah, Mr., uh, Dr. Adarri.
So, I, I'm not sure whether the board actually accepted Ms. Polakowski's retirement, but I-
They did, I did check, it made me a little nervous.
Are we okay? I, I just got a little bit nervous, because it, it kind of, I, I, I had a certain set of comments prepared, so-
It was six-three.
There we go, excellent.
Yeah, she's got, she's already got plans, the limo's outside. I mean, I, I, that wouldn't help, you know? I mean, she's, she's traveling, I didn't, I, I mean, the limo was outside, is it still running?
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
So, so the board just accepted the retirement of an educator that I, that I've only had a, a, a short opportunity to work with here in my tenure here in Edison Township. Ms. Polakowski is ending her thirty-eight-plus career in the summer.
Thirty-eight and one month.
Thirty-eight and one month of, of two-thousand-twenty-three. Um, Gail, just on a, on a personal note, it's been an absolute pleasure to call you a colleague. I, I consider it a privilege to work with you, and that our paths have crossed. I know I speak for the entire board, as, as well as the Central Office Team, um, a- and our crew, that you will be sorely missed by every member of this organization. And I thank you for your commitment, and, uh, and good luck and best wishes in retirement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I also want to say, you know, thank you, Gail, and ev-, like Ms. Conway said, she's everywhere. When, when she's the principal at JP, I attend every event I went to, I, I can see her. And when she becomes the Chief Academic Officer, I had the pleasure, pleasure to work with her, you know, so much knowledge and so very responsive, I would say, probably as much as Dr. Adarri. And, uh, it's really a pleasure working with you, thank you. Um, next, we have motion to approve the Administration Curriculum and In- Instruction People's Special Service Reports.
Motion?
Second.
That was close.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm gonna go-
No, no, hey, no, I respect, I respectfully decline.
Everybody's getting along tonight, I'm gonna give it to Mo. Mr. Vishal Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Brah Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Moen Patel?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Vice President Romano?
Yes.
President Peng?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve finance reports.
Motion? Second.
Madam President, can I have a quick question?
Sure.
So the item that's added on today, what is that? This JP Civic, you know, Keystone Construction-
Oh, the change, correct, that's a change order. What that is is for, it's a performance and payment bond, that, for security on the project. Uh, the vendor offered an option of, for us to secure the bond through them, have, you know, have them go out and get the, the bond, or to go out and get it on our own. Uh, we chose to go out through them to-
This is a security?
Correct, yeah.
Oh, okay.
All, all construction projects, you want to have a performance gu-, bond, God forbid twelve months. Eighteen months after the project's done, there's an issue, we get them back here and-
Got it.
They gotta fix it.
Got it, thank you.
Not a problem.
Thank you, now-
Oh, I'm sorry.
You, you call, yeah.
Perfect. Uh, Mr. Vishal Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Brah Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Moen Patel?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Vice President Romano?
Yes.
President Peng?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Committee reports, finance and facility.
Upcoming meetings. Oh, it's the, oh, next one, okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I've got it too.
Yeah, committee reports.
Okay. You want me to go first?
Yeah, finance.
Finance, facility, uh, we had three meetings. Uh, the first one's April nineteenth. Uh, we started four o'clock in attendance, Mr. Romano, myself, Mohim Patel, Vishal Patel, Dr. Adarri, uh, Mr. Toast, Jacqueline, Becky, Bill Colibus, and Valerie from DCO, and also, um, um, I'm, I'm missing someone. Oh, Mr. Murphy, I'm sorry. Mr. Murphy. So, for the facilities, uh, for the ESIP, uh, DCO provided update on the ESIP program. Given the recent change in the BPU, the overall rebate will be reduced by three to four million dollars. This is at time, uh, but later on, they actually came back. Uh, so ESIP, uh, scope will be reduced slightly, it doesn't apply anymore. Uh, submitted a proposal to BPU on April nineteenth, approval is anticipated in fourteen days. Engineering, design, and financing about eight weeks after approval, bidding will be in the summer this year. Still in scope is new central, um, cooling for FDR. Uh, new boilers in JP, TJ, and Washington, uh, Washington School, and roofing multiple schools, as well as lighting replacements throughout the district. Uh, summer staff help, we mentioned a little bit, and the district has allocated ninety thousand dollars to high, district high school students as summer helpers. Cricket master plan, given the addition of cricket program in the school's curriculum, committee members visited multiple school sites with DMR Architect. DMR will design a cricket master plan, construction will be public-private partnership. Finance, um, twenty-twenty-four budget approved by NJ DOE. Mr. Toast will review the budget, uh, in April. Mr. Toast presented the, um, initial, uh, review to the committee. Uh, suggestions were made of his presentation for the May budget hearing. Fiscal year twenty-twenty-four bids. Mr. Toast shared the, the bids that will be posted, uh, for the new school year. The bids have been posted, all right? Uh, JP expansion financing, district has zero debt now, uh, will seek financing for JP expansion, and will be covered by the budget, which we just approved, um, at this meeting, eighteen million dollars. The next meeting happened on May second at four o'clock. Attendees, uh, attendees are, uh, Mr. Romano, myself, Mr. Mohim Patel, Vishal Patel, Dr. Adarri, Jonathan Toast, Jackie, and, uh, Bill Colibus. The, it's mainly for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four budget presentation. Uh, Mr. Toast presented the budget to the committee again, and minor revisions were suggested for the May third public presentation. He did a fantastic job, we all saw what he did. Uh, health insurance broker, the committee recommended, uh, Fairview, Align, Alamo, and RD Prezy for the whole board to interview on May third. Risk insurance broker, the committee recommended Fairview, Alamo, RD Prezy for the whole board for interview on May third, which we did. The third meeting happened on May sixteenth. In attendance, uh, is the same group of people. Uh, Mr. Romano, myself, Mohim Patel, Vishal Patel, Dr. Adarri, uh, Mr. Toast, uh, Mrs. Becky, Bill Colibus, Scott Murphy, uh, Malaney Baruso from, uh, USA, and our two principals, uh, Ms., Mrs. Valentine and, uh, Mrs. Blevins. US, USA Architects, they, they reviewed the gym interior color choices with the principal and the board. Uh, we have very limited choices. Uh, BOE members commented, um, no natural, uh, lights for the gyms. Uh, no bathroom added for the new gyms, even with the current bathroom shortage in the schools. Principal would have brought the bathroom concerns up with the architect if the plan had reviewed with them during design, or could be caught by the BOE members if more facility meetings were held last year. Now it's too late. Capital projects, uh, TJ bid will be open on June ninth, and the combined Woodrow Wilson and John Adams bid, it's one bid together, will open on June eighth. Uh, DMR is reviewing some of those of N-R-FIs for the Herbert Hoover Gym Project. JP addition meeting held with DMR and district administrations to discuss project planning. The auditorium flooring issues needs to be completely resolved, and that might increase the budget slightly, because we all know that, that, you know, the JP auditorium gets flooded, and we have the pump and backup pumps, we have a lot of issues with that. Now, since we are renovating the auditorium, uh, we want to solve the problem once for all. Lincoln School Gym is completed and being used, uh, will have a plaque and ribbon-cutting ceremony. Um, we, the board agreed, the committee agreed to, with a change order for JCD to replace lighting poles and lights at both high school football stadiums. The total cost is forty-eight thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars. Uh, JMI proposal was approved by DOE on that day. Estimated cost is about seventeen million dollars. Will, uh, put together with the JP, uh, for financing, so the district will not be charged twice by the financial advisor and the bond council. Uh, for the finance, um, public hearing will be held at the BOE meeting, uh, for the eighteen million JP financing, which we just did. Uh, IRP reviews that I mentioned before, Architect Art Services, we need more time to review the proposal at next meeting. The construction managers, because we have multiple projects ongoing, uh, instead of hiring one construction manager for each project, we've, we felt it's part more efficient and, and, and more financially beneficial to us to hire a firm that will manage multiple projects. We discussed a tier-based fee structure, we'll review at the next meeting. Bond council, uh, three bond, three proposals were, were received. Uh, we recommended McManin, Scotland, and Barnum LLC for bond, for board approval, which we just did today. Auditor service, uh, recommended Hoffman, Frenea, Frenea, Allison PC for board approval, because we only had one proposal, and that, that was it. Special services for special needs, uh, we will take the recommendation from the staff committee, which we just approved today. First fire safety will replace the JP John Adams old fire system as two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand dollars and twenty-five thousand dollars. DMR pre-application was meeting, pre-application meeting with NJ DOE to discuss a street extension from JP to New Dover, it's about eight thousand dollars. The issue with that is, um, there might be some potential problem with the wetland and stuff. Instead of for us to submit the proposal, uh, we just have a, a pre-meeting with them to see where, uh, they, where they stand on this. If they say no, that we, we're not even going to submit the proposal, it's a waste of an effort for both of us. So, um, that's what that pre-application meeting is for. Relocation of JP Tennis Court, expansion of the JP parking lot, it will cost the, uh, you know, the design is about thirty thousand dollars. Board members asked DMR to add one more court if it's possible. Uh, ESIP, uh, twenty-seven million dollar finance was bidded, two bids were received. Uh, we were, was a bid to the TD Bank at three-point-three percent. The other bid, I think, was Citibank at three-point-six. Um, so, altogether, Mr. Toast presented the, uh, the budget, the takeaway message was three years, no tax increase. The takeaway of this school board meeting minutes is, in this year, this school board is gonna invest one-hundred million dollars. It's not ten million, it's not one million, it's one-hundred million dollar into school expansion and improvements, with zero tax increase. One-hundred million dollar investment, zero tax increase. I want to thank this board, um, for taking that effort, and for, you know, um, deliver on their campaign promise. That was a campaign promise from Mrs. Penn, and, uh, you know, Mr. Romano, and Vishal Patel. Expansion with zero tax increase, and they did it, with a hundred million dollars. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Shi.
Board President?
Oh, Mr. Schneider?
I have some questions. Uh, I, uh, I agree with Mr. Shi, I think the one-hundred million dollar expansion is pretty incredible, and it's something that, Mr. Shi, you know that we started together. Myself, you, you and Dr. Bregan sat in an office, and we, we had preliminary meetings before we went to the committee, the whole, and we worked together, we came up with a great framework, that now, I think this board is, is really doing an excellent job sticking to, so, something to be proud of. Uh, question for you, Mr. Shi. Question for you, Mr. Shi. On your April, let's see.
Nineteenth.
Your April nineteenth meeting minutes.
Yep.
You mentioned a private-public partnership for cricket.
Yes.
Tell us about that.
And I mentioned before that, that, you know, we want to work with the, the teams, ask them to help us with financing of some of the, the building the fields. So, we tried to see if they can absorb the cost, instead of we putting out money on the cricket field.
Which teams are these?
Any of these teams that's playing, been playing in our fields before.
Talking about Board of Ed teams?
We have, we have.
Are you talking about the children in the Board of Ed, or are we talking about the adults?
We have the adults, they're willing to help, to, they're willing to put money to help build these, these fields, if they want help, take advantage of it, so, instead of we taking money out of our budget, you know, let them help us.
Well, we have taken, I'm sorry. We are going to take and put additions on our schools, and in the process of it, in the process, some of the field is being taken up.
Correct.
Okay, which means one of the cricket fields is going to be moved. Now, is there a master plan, which we've discussed, about the formulation of what the fields are going to look like, so in the future, in the future, we don't have to take and move another field? Now, are we talking about softball, or soccer? Are we talking about any of the other co-curricular sports in the school system?
So, it's written over here, and the master plan will be presented to the committee, and I think they're, they're coming at the next meeting. And the construction, we try to use PPP to do that.
Is it for the school, or is it for the community?
It's for the school field.
So, in other words, it's just for the schools?
Right.
So, Board President. Mr. Shi, I just wanted to clarify, so, a couple things. Any private-public partnerships, you say PPP. Private-public partnership. To clarify, anything that happens, construction on our property, is going to be board-approved, correct?
Absolutely.
So, this is not just in a committee? I see it in the notes here, but that's not the only thing we're going to see, we're going to actually have a vote, we're going to talk about it, we're going to have a master plan, as Mr. Romano said, we have to be thoughtful about where they're going. I heard a unanimous board here endorse cricket to be played by our schoolchildren.
Yes.
Yeah.
This is something that we've agreed upon in public, to add to our curriculum for our children.
Absolutely.
Board President? I also believe, excuse me, I also believe that this board, if we are going to put something in our curriculum for, for our schoolchildren, should also be prepared to fund that within our budget.
Let's see.
And while I appreciate your thought of getting members of our community to come and pay for things on our property, I actually don't agree with that, I think that we have a duty to our students, just like this nice young lady talked about books in our library, we have a duty to get her books, and whatever tools needed to have cricket in the, in our curriculum, we're, our duty is to provide those tools for our schoolchildren.
Well, if.
So, I would ask this board, I would ask the Board President, as you look towards the agendas for the rest of the year, that, that, in the nature for transparency, for this board to endorse, I, I would like to, to move towards a board that endorses spending on, on the children's needs in the curriculum, and I don't think we should be asking for donations to do so. My opinion. Our taxpayers pay enough, we pay a lot of taxes in this town, and it's our duty to provide for our schoolchildren with those, with those tax dollars.
Board President, if I may add something?
Let me, let me answer, let me answer. So, duly noted, you can have your opinions, and right now, we don't know how much it will cost, right? So, let's wait for the master plan, and then we can, you know, the board can decide how to fund it. If you, if everyone wants the board to fund it, hey, that's fine, but if someone wants to give some money to help us, why not? But you know what, that's a decision for next step. Let's, let's look at the master plan, just look at the total cost, and then we can go from there.
It sounds like we're on the same page, thank you.
Board President, if I may add something, please.
Yeah.
A public-private partnership is something that's welcomed from this board, I would say, because if it's going to help alleviate a lot of the problems that we have with our budgets, that is going to be actually much better. What we don't get is when the developers develop fifteen or fourteen building, apartment buildings in our area, and then they, the school kids, our schools are flooded with that, and we don't have the funding coming in from that, that's a problem. When one house is broken and four houses are built, that's a problem. So, if there's public partnership that they're willing to help with funding, that is much more welcome than not. The other thing is, we also have warehouses after warehouses that come into our town that add on, no, but they, it's all part of the process. When they add on to our, our, our district traffic and everything that goes on, and we don't collect extra funds from them, and we give them tax incentives, that's a problem for the schools as well. So, if we're going to have parents, or anyone else, or businesses that want to donate, our clubs collect money from businesses as well, small businesses, for their clubs, so if we're able to get funding for any kind of project that we have, I more than welcome that. There's alumni, there are billionaires in this town, and if they want to help fund some project, I am more than willing to take that funding, because it benefits our kids. First and foremost, these cricket fields, this volleyball fields, any field, any gymnasium, any classroom, is an addition to our kids' betterment. So, I will take any money that I can get from anywhere, if it's going to help our students get what they need. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. White.
Okay, let me just go back, because I, I think I might have missed something along the way here. But, you know, when this all first came up, last year, when Dr. Bregan was here, and we had that huge discussion about the cricket, and it being, I thought we, I thought it was voted on, and I think that we, it was settled, that this was supposed to be for youth sports only, okay? And, you know, and I think everybody was in agreement with that. And I, I see this, this is beautiful, and you want to add all these cricket fields and stuff, and now we're going to have the, this put into our curriculum for our children, youth?
Yes.
Okay? I still do not, well, I'm only one vote, I'm only one person up here, I do not agree with adult leagues using our fields. I don't care, oh, thank you so much, I'm glad you like that, but I really and truly feel that they should be for our children, not for adults. I think if they want to donate for the kids, so that the kids can use it, but not for the adults, this is youth.
Board President, if I may add, just one more, one more point I want to add, please, thank you. When we decided last time, it was for the kids, and it's always going to be for the kids, I don't understand why this is an issue still? It has always been for the kids, they're the first priority, that field is going to be used for our kids, first priority, always. All right, so, I don't understand, there's a mute point, we're going to spend an hour talking about this subject, I would like to move on, please.
When you talk about a public and private, public and private, that's the problem. I think, according to, and I agree with Ms. White, I want the cricket fields to be at the Board of Ed, it's at R., it's the Board of Eds. If someone wants to use it, it's not public-private. That's the problem. The word public and private, the way it was discussed, or the way it was talked about, is not the issue. I'll give you every field that you want for cricket on our school property for our students. Our students, the ones that we are looking at right now, the teachers that were in here before.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make, you know, to answer Mrs. White's question, last year, it was not only for the students, the adults league has been using our field, it's just, all of a sudden, they were not handled by the school district, it was moved, transferred to the township, so the school district actually has no control of who's using the fields last year. This year, it is controlled by this, by the school district, they have to register through the school district. Secondly, personally, I think, no matter who's funded our facility, who's donating to build our facility, as long as it's in our school property, we have full ownership, and we always, our students always have the priority to use it. Doesn't matter who helped funding it, who helped building it, it's, we have the full ownership. And third, I would, you know, guarantee, no matter what we decide, it's going to be transparent, all the decision will, all the plan will be presented to the board, all the decision is going to be voted by the, by the entire board. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I speak?
Mr. Valer.
Another two-hour discussion on cricket.
No, it's another two-hour session on cricket?
Amazing that everyone else has a comment, it could speak, but when someone else has something, you want to shut them down?
No, we're not shutting them down.
What can I, can I ask my questions?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, mine are more probably curriculum-based, and it's probably going to Mr. Alderelli. We haven't had an athletic meeting since February, so I'm curious where we are with cricket in our schools. Is curriculum currently being writing, being written, and where are we with that, what is the status with that, what grade levels, is it being incorporated in the PE, or is it after-school, pro, like, what are we doing? I haven't heard a peep about it, so I think soon as someone read it, now you got a thousand questions, so I'm curious with the curriculum aspect of that. The other thing I was looking at, you know, they said DMR went to multiple sites, what sites were they looking at, what's, which cricket pitch needs to be moved, what's the cost for that? And I was pretty interested in the public partnership, because, you know, when we asked for five hundred, I believe five hundred dollars last year, the cricket world went to chaos, because they went from fifty to five hundred. So, I don't even know if cricket's being, our fields are being used for cricket now, I have no idea, we never voted on it, we never discussed it, so I don't know where we are with that. But, you know, I have to agree with Joe, and I have to agree with Mrs. White, and Doug with the comments that, and you guys as well, I can't take that away from you, you did say, children first, children first, I get that. Our best pitch is in Woodrow Wilson, so are our kids scheduled to use that pitch all the time? I remember last year, apparent, someone complained saying that they were using, I believe the pitch at Martin Luther King, I believe the, the school was, which was one of not, it was not our premier pitch, and probably not the safest. So, I think, to be honest with you guys, the, the aspect of cricket was finally brought up, and now there's a million questions for it. So, you know, curriculum aspect, where are we at with it? What do we, where are we at with our kids learning the sport? Where is our interest? We're supposed to do a survey, you know, how many people are actually interested in doing this, because I hate to put money into something that's not going to be used. And that's just the top of the iceberg of questions I have. Maybe I need to generate a question, an email of some sort, and bring these concerns, because, again, Jerry, I don't want to keep this a long conversation, but, you know, I mean, there are questions here, I remember in the email last year, it was five hundred, and then it was supposed to be a thousand this year. Are they paying five hundred, are they paying a thousand? I got the email here in front of my face, that was what was approved last year by the board. But, like, again, I have no idea, this is the first time I'm hearing cricket.
Yeah, sure.
So, I agree, it's probably part of the, in, an email that we can go back and forth, there's a lot of moving parts with regards to this, so I believe the last update that came from the athletic directors was at some point in March. The plan is twofold. For our high school students, we are looking to do a club sport for, for cricket, and engage in some of the high schools that currently have, that's only a few, I believe Monroe, and I forget the other one that's off, off the top of my head, but they would be basically playing cricket amongst the three programs that we would have, both high schools, as well as the high school in Monroe, and there's another school as well.
So, here's my question for you, the numbers again. It's going to be a club sport, now, can they be bussed to Woodrow and use that pitch?
We, yep, we're planning all those, yep, absolutely, we have all.
Hate to spend money.
Hundred percent, hundred percent, all those pieces, so the athletic directors did a really nice job, not only talking about transportation, curricular aspects as well, but also the times of day, and, and what season to play in also, right? At the middle school level, they were looking at, and I think currently, right now, at Woodrow, they want, they run in the morning, I'm pretty sure, before, before school starts, there's enough daylight at that time, I think they come in, in the morning, definitely right now, yep, at Jams and Woodrow, currently run a cricket intramural piece in the morning, students arrive before school and, and participate. The goal has always been to be pioneers in this area, and expand the sport for our students, and that's the reason why our ADs did a wonderful job in presenting it to the athletic commit, committee. We probably need to update the board as to the status right now, I agree, there's a lot of questions that are circulating with regards to that, I'll take ownership of that. I know the, the chair of that committee has asked for monthly updates, so I'm, I'm probably a month behind, so I'll definitely take care of that. As far as us moving forward with regards to the curricular components, yes, that's something that we want to begin teaching. We have club sports at our elementary levels right now, where there's interest. A survey of coaches and students is underway and going to be conducted at the high school, there's definitely interest. I know for a fact, Mr. Ross tweeted me a picture of students playing at the, right, over at Edison High, so we definitely know that there's interest, it's our job as the adults and the educators here, to make sure that we organize it, and provide our students with opportunities, you know, to engage in these extracurricular pieces.
Brian, can I add something?
Sure.
So, so we do have a meeting in June, we were giving extra time, because the ED has to figure out a lot of logistics, right, our volleyball grounds are not up to regulation, they have to select the balls, so we give them extra time to come up with it, and you'll probably have all these answers in the June meeting.
I just want to make sure we have the interest for it, before we dedicate all these, all the money and resources, that's my only concern. So, I was curious, where are we at with the survey?
I'm confident that we have interest on both ends of town, and in all, in all representations of schools, you know, participation, maybe more.
Some of it's there, I just don't want to waste tax dollars for nothing.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And the other comment, my final comment, again, with the public partnership, you know, I'm glad the teams are interested in participating and donating to the fields, I, I think that's great. What I find ironic, though, is, when we raised the cost from fifty dollars to five hundred, suddenly had, no one had no money. So, I appreciate it.
You're saying one side of the story, they had a problem because we were collecting money and not giving any services, right?
Who was collecting money?
We were.
Our fields, we rented our fields for a hundred dollars each time they used it, and we gave it for fifty bucks, and then we gave it for five hundred, and they played sixty games a week, and I think we were more than fair.
We were not giving any services, we, we raised the money, they were not worried about the money part, they are willing to give more money.
Use of our fields was, I believe, fair enough.
Doesn't matter, we collected five hundred dollars last year, we did not give them any service, right? So, so this time, it's okay, well, how about we give you service, they're willing to pay, they paid five hundred again this year.
What services are we giving, different from this year than last year?
Mowing the lawn.
Mowing the lawn?
Just, just for one example, putting the.
Is it, is it, I think we should move on.
Let's just move on, yeah, let's just move on.
If you have any questions, Brian.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Vishal, you guys can talk offline, thank you.
You guys are both on the committee, yeah, you can talk on, you know, offline.
All right, let's move on. Ginny, you want to start with your Township Liaison Committee report?
Yes, I have two this time. I have one from Tuesday, April the eighteenth, the Township BOE Liaison Committee meeting was held on Tuesday, April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, at the Education Center, beginning at eleven AM and ending at twelve noon. In attendance in person were Assemblyman Robert J. Karabincheck, Chief of Staff Bob Deal, Council President John Pointer, Deputy Chief of Police Bob Dudash, Community Constituent Relations Coordinator Pat Coyle, BOE members Mo and Patel, Bureau Patel, BOE Board President Shannon Pang, Acting Superintendent Dr. Edward Alderelli, BOE Business Administrator Board Secretary John Toth, Director of Security Pat Cassane, and BOE Member Virginia White Chair. Via Zoom, we had Edison Fire Chief Andy Toth, and Council Liaison Chair Jay Patel. We began, we began our meeting with Chief Toth. Chief Toth discussed the information pertaining to the Talmadge Road Fire, the fire impacted thirteen of our students. He said that the response and the coordination between the town and the school district was outstanding. Together, they provided clothing, school supplies, and shelter to families in need. He. He also highlighted the efforts of one of our attendance officers, officers, Dora Ramos, and the assistance she and other volunteers provided to aid the families affected by this terrible fire. Chief Toth also touched on the reunification program and the opportunities video that are currently being developed. Director of Security Pat Cassane stated that the reunification program will be doing two sessions, one in April and one in May. The board will be sending representatives, representatives, both administrative and support staff to help. Assemblyman Karabincheck, uh, let's see, updated the group on various funding projects and initiatives. State aid, school funding is over twenty-five million dollars. The budget also included aid for preschool, security, workforce development, and the trades, as well as security for school buses inside and outside. Uh, we had a lengthy discussion on geothermal programs for schools. Princeton, Princeton schools already use geothermal. Chief of Staff Bob Deal announced the master plan meeting scheduled for Wednesday, April the nineteenth, is in the council chambers, beginning at six P.M. There are fourteen volunteer members on this committee. Gail Polikowski is one of our school district representatives on this committee. All the plans were, were presented covering all categories. The input was accepted from the residents in attendance. The completed master plan will be presented to the planning board and Mr. Deal was happy with the work completed by the planning firm at this time. He also stated that the efforts of the B.O.E., township, and volunteers were impressive and that the response was incredible to assist those impacted by the Talmadge Road fire. Deputy Chief Bob Dudash stated that registration has begun for this year's junior police academy. At this time, the crossing guard positions are currently filled. They have hired an additional floater to use if needed. They, this could change due, due to the different circumstances. And he said that the town is looking into privatization as a potential if this solution is needed. Uh, the police department is looking into grants for distracted driving enforcement. Deputy Chief Dudash said that the Woodrow Wilson Gloria Avenue is currently on schedule for this summer and Old Post Road and Boulevard of Eagles is being looked at for potential upgrades and solutions. The next liaison meeting will be scheduled for Tuesday, May sixteenth. Respectfully submitted, uh, Virginia White. So now this is the May sixteenth, when, I'm sorry, this, these are long. The township B.O.E. liaison committee was held on Tuesday, May sixteenth at the Education Center, beginning at eleven A.M. and ending at eleven fifty. In attendance in person were the Mayor's Chief of Staff Bob Deal, Council President John Pointer, Community Constituent Relations Coordinator Pat Coyle, B.O.E. Member Bureau Patel, Acting Superintendent Dr. Edward Alderelli, Business Administrator Board Secretary John Toth, B.O.E. Director of Security Pat Cassane, and B.O.E. Member Virginia White. Via Zoom, we had Edison Fire Chief Andy Toth, Council Liaison Chair A.J. Patel, B.O.E. President Shannon Pang, and B.O.E. Member Moen Patel. Fire Chief Toth provided information regarding Woodrow Wilson's eighth grade celebration. They had an incident there with an accident. Uh, our fire department, along with our police department, uh, with Deputy Chief Dudash, P.S.E.N.G., as well as our B.O.E. security, together were able to resolve this issue and our students were able to have their celebration. Chief Toth also stated that the next reunification class is scheduled for June the fifteenth. Sergeant Michael Winters updated us on Woodrow Wilson, uh, Middle School Gloria Avenue project. The project will begin at the end of the school year. P and A construction will be doing the work. We are continuing to research Old Post Road and Boulevard of Eagles. Okay, Chief of Staff Bob Deal provided additional information regarding the master plan. The open meeting was very successful and informative. Their next master plan committee meeting is scheduled for June the twenty-third. The plan will be presented to the planning board when completed. Bob informed us of the following upcoming events. Uh, Thursday, May eighteenth, the Battle of Bennetts Island Historical Marker unveiling. Through the combined efforts of East Brunswick and Edison Township Historical Society was held. And that was at the Edison Boat Docks. Uh, Saturday, May twenty-seventh, is the Memorial Day Parade, beginning at Division Street and ending at Lindon House School at Blossom Street. The start time for the parade is twelve noon. Uh, Monday, May twenty-ninth, street sign dedications will be held at the municipal complex at ten A.M. Council President John Pointer gave us some, some insight into the Sustainable New Jersey Environmental Commission. He discussed the Edison Township Green Team, new farming techniques, hydrophonic plant, planting, and environmental issues. Community Relations Constituent Pat Coyle reminded us that he can assist where, where needed. If you have a problem, you know, a small problem, please call him and he will help you. All you need to do is reach out if you need. The next meeting for the liaison committee is scheduled for Tuesday, July the eighteenth. Tentatively, okay, and that's it. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Mrs. White.
Madam President.
Yeah, Mr. Shi.
Uh, Mr. White, uh, can I ask a couple of questions? So, um, two things that really, um, you know, I need, need to find some answers. Where is the township on Stelton School? And what, where is the township on the Talmadge and Coolidge, uh, property?
They were not discussed at this meeting, but I'll be sure to bring them up at the next one.
I thought there was a comment from Bob Deal at one of the meetings that, uh, the, the district is not gonna, uh, they're not gonna give the Stelton School to this issue.
No, he never made that comment. That comment came from somebody else.
Okay.
You know, but not Bob Deal.
Is that, is that from?
As a matter of fact, Bob Deal provided us with the deed. Uh, I think Moen had requested that deed and I, uh, he did provide us with it. As a matter of fact, I gave Moen a copy and I also gave, uh, our board attorney a copy of that. But we did not go to, into any in-depth discussion on Stelton School.
Yeah, I, I understand, but because the same thing going on for two years. So if we can get an answer whether they have interest or there's no interest, because we do have other plans that we need to do, right? If this is part of that thing that we can potentially include in our plan, we'll include it. If not, let's move on and, and find for something else. And I don't know where is the, the, the status of the Talmadge and Coolidge. Uh, is the township going to buy the property first? Then work with the B.O.E. as to what we gonna do with that? Or they want us to give them what we plan to do? They're gonna buy it? So what, where is it, where is it on the Talmadge and Coolidge facility?
I had, I don't have an answer for you, Jerry.
Okay, can we get some answer next time?
I will try to get one for the next meeting if you wish. I do know that they are going to purchase the property. They're not asking us what we're gonna do with it. But I don't think it would be a bad idea to give them an idea of what we would like to do with it. I know you feel that that property is way too small to build a school. But, uh, you know, I, we can use it for other things that, you know, other, you know.
Yeah, we spoke on the phone. I think we, we.
We came up with a list.
Yeah, list our probably ten, twenty things that we can do with that property.
That, you know, none of it involves a school. It would, you know, probably do fine for a preschool. But I mean, we could use it for transportation. We could use it for enrollment. We can move our whole maintenance department over there if we wish. There are many, many things that we could do with that that would free space up at the Ed Center, which you know is ve- very overcrowded. We could even do a whole special needs building for that. I mean, I could go on and on. I could think of a thousand uses for that piece of property. You know, and if, uh, you know, and if I was able to grant that wish, I would do it, for sure.
If we can find out where they are.
But I will find out for you, I promise.
Appreciate it.
And, um, as far as Stelton School, I asked the same question. I don't like spinning my wheels and they told me that I'm not. So if, as long as they say I'm not, then I will continue.
And one more request.
Three years in a way.
Yours is a drop in the bucket.
Can I, can I have one more request? Um, I know the recreation department has been using our facilities for a lot of their activities. And I think I asked at the beginning of the year, I'd like to have a list from the recreation department. What are the things they're using for our facilities? At which school facilities and on which date they're using it? Is anywhere we can get that from the recreation department?
I think recreation provided you with some of that, didn't they?
I did not get it.
You did not get it?
No.
Okay, I'll check.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, next, can we have the policy committee reports? Mr. Mohan Patel.
Thank you, Board President. The policy committee met on Tuesday, April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Present at the meeting were Shannon Pang, Board President Shannon Pang, I'm sorry. Uh, Board Member Jerry Shi, Board, uh, Board Vice President Joseph Romano, Dr. Alderelli, Mr. Toth, and Dr. Tuhe, and myself. Mr. T. Mr. T. Uh, multiple policies are on tonight's agenda for second reading. Uh, they were introduced on the first reading at the April eighteenth Board of Education meeting. Most of these policies on tonight's agenda are mandate changes related to the re-adoption of state statutes or change to state law. Policy zero one four four, Board Member Orientation and Training, has been revised to reflect that requirement that Board of Education members receive training within ninety days of taking office. Policy twenty-five twenty, uh, Instructional Supplies, as a mandated, as a mandated policy reflects current best practices and allows the superintendent to designate a staff member for the selection and utilization of school supplies. Policy fifty-three oh five, Health Service Personnel, is also a mandated policy change as per updates to Administrative Code. Although the responsibilities of the district physician and school nurse, as outlined in the policy, have remained the same. Some changes were made specific to the licensure requirements for school physicians and the information school physicians must include within the, within their contract. Hold on, there's a few more. I know you guys are gonna remember every single policy, but let me just go through with it. Policy fifty-three oh eight and policy fifty-three one zero, Student Health Records and Student Health Services, respectfully, respectively, are mandated policies and reflect the readoption of Administrative Code at the state level. Each of these new policies include minor changes to language that are not substantiate, substantive, minor language changes to reflect updated Administrative Code. Exciting. Policy six-three one-two, policy six-one-five-five, and policy six-three one-one point zero four, all relate to the district's use of federal funds. These are mandated policy changes and simply reflect, excuse me, the current practices of our business office. Reimbursement of federal and other grant expenditures. Policy seventy-four forty, uh, School District Security has been changed to reflect the requirement that the district provide more detailed maps of our facilities to local law enforcement. This is a mandated change, however. Our school security office, under the leadership of, uh, Mr. Cassane, has already been sharing the required materials referenced in this policy with Edison P.D. Policy P-nine-one-zero-zero, Public Relations is being abolished as the language and the policy is being absorbed into policy nine-one-four-zero, Citizen Advisory Committees, which creates the option for the superintendent at the direction of the Board of Education to create an advisory committee for the purposes of communication between the Board of Education and the community at large. And that was the conclusion of this policy committee report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? Mr. Rivera.
I know, Eddie, we brought it up last week about, uh, equipped with at least one panic alarm. I know that this is the best practice that they did. I'm wondering if we could be the game changers and say at least two?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Cassane and I actually spoke about that today as we were reviewing the agenda. Um, and, uh, we have, uh, some, some interesting ways. Yes, we de, we're definitely have two.
Okay, thank you.
To make a long story short, we definitely have two.
Just want to make sure our staff and kids are safe.
Probably a little bit more detail in that conversation without revealing all the security components and stuff like that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, can we have, uh, Transportation Committee reports? Mr. Romano.
Thank you. Payments for the second half of the school year will be sent out in July after certification is received from the district schools. The Transportation Department is currently accepting aid in the, in lieu of applications for two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Subscription busing. The application for twenty-three, twenty-four school year is currently active to the parental portal. It will be available and the deadline will be June thirtieth. Bus routes are currently being developed for the upcoming school year. The department anticipates that the bus assignments will be sent out the third week of August via the parental portal. Any information that's needed, talk to the Transportation Department via email. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Last but not least, we have.
One question. So what does, what does it mean by department is currently accepting aid in lieu of applications?
That's, I could take that. That's for, in lieu is, uh, for transportation for students that reside, that, that attend at a district like a parochial school that reside less than nineteen point nine, whatever it is, miles. They are entitled to reimbursement twice a year as long as they've, uh, attended school for the hundred and eighty days. It's a pro-rated amount of money. But those, those applications, as, uh, Vice President Romano said, are, are currently being accepted. They're called the B-six-T. You can get them from your parochial school and, uh, they're also located online at the NJ DOE. Real quick, while I got the mic, I just want to respond to Mr. Rivera about the library books. Just took a brief look into it. We're talking about, uh, not for like textbooks or things like that, but, um, for your consumables, periodicals, about twenty grand each high school. And I'm not talking like site licenses, just for books. So there's funding available for those needs. Circulation is better word.
One little question, please.
Mrs. White, yeah.
The, the portal, is the portal gonna be up and running so that they can get those things? I know it shuts down to be, you know, for maintenance over the summer. You know, we just have to make sure that it's up and running so that those, uh, things will go out, you know, in a timely manner. It does happen, you know, and, uh, you know, you're gonna really need to keep an eye on that.
No, I, I, I couldn't agree with you more. Um, I know that the, the portal is updated now with like the current application for subscription busing. Um, it's being made available to, uh, students that, whose families would qualify. I have no problem holding our software provider accountable. I got a pipeline right to the owner and, and, and he, he knows that it has to perform as we pay for.
Wish to work.
Absolutely. Thanks.
Madam President.
Mr. Shi.
Yeah, just a, a couple of comments on this, uh, transportation report. Uh, aiding lieu, this is, uh, for those people attending private schools and stuff. Make sure that you contact your school to send the application early. Because by law, with certain months you go by, your, um, payment reduces. And, and I think after July or June, or whatever if you submit, you get nothing. So make sure that you contact your schools and get those applications in. And the other thing was very important is, you know, uh, Mr. Joe Romano mentioned in the, in the report is subscription busing. Deadline is June thirtieth. June thirtieth, let me repeat, the deadline for sending the subscription application. Please send them in. Thank you.
Thank you. Last, um, Community Relationship Reports, Mr. Mohan Patel.
Thank you, Board President. The Community Relations Committee met on Wednesday, May seventeen, twenty twenty-three. Present at the meeting were Mohan Patel, Shannon Pang, Jerry Shi, Jeannie White, Dr. Alderelli, Dr. Bavir, Mr. Toth, and Dr. Tuhe. All right. We discussed, uh, the parent, uh, academy. Uh, the meeting began with Dr. Bavir, uh, Principal of Ben Franklin Elementary School. leading a discussion regarding the formation of a Parent Academy. I'm sure a lot of parents out there would love to have the knowledge and the, the basic information that they require and they go to WhatsApp for. It'll be properly available to you. Now more on the Parent Academy. Dr. Bavir has experienced establishing a Parent Academy and presented this concept to the committee. The intention of the academy is to allow members of the community to connect, discuss, and address the issues facing the district, and to highlight the positive initiatives taking place throughout Edison. Dr. Bavir walked the committee through steps to, to formation, including identifying a leadership team, developing surveys for parents and educators, and selecting topics to address throughout next year and beyond. This academy is intended to serve as a nexus between parents, the school, and the broader community to connect our families with resources. Dr. Bavir intends to present this information at an upcoming board meeting. We also discussed Director of Communication and Policy. Dr. Eldorelli then updated the committee on the hiring process for the Director of Communication and Policy. The key responsibilities of this position include branding, streamlined communication, public relations, social media presence, and the review of district policy. The Hiring Committee for this position anticipates having a candidate to present to the Board of Education prior to the June thirteenth action meeting. Education Foundation, which is another thing that we were talking about earlier, where we have funds that would come in to help the district with many projects. A lot of people would like to donate in terms of different infrastructure or even seats or whatever it is. This is something that is done in the private sector and that helps alleviate a lot of the pain that is, that comes when you do it, different projects. But just to give you more about it, is Education Foundation, Mr. Toth, also provided an update to the committee on the creation of an Education Foundation. An Education Foundation is a community-based fundraising organization that works in tandem with the Board of Education in the furtherance of established goals. The foundation also highlights the success of staff and students and provides funds directly for initiatives which may fall outside of the budget. Mr. Toth reviewed the logistics of establishing the foundations in terms of bylaws and the ability of this entity to accept and disperse funds. We anticipate holding an organization during the summer months, which will include key leadership members, key leadership members from the Board of Education and the school administration, with the intent of passing the responsibility of day-to-day operations to the community during the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. That concludes my committee report on community relations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohin Patel. Any comments, questions? No, I just have announcement for upcoming meetings. For June, we're gonna combine the caucus meeting and the public meeting. Therefore, it's gonna be starting at six PM, June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, at Edison High School Auditorium, right here. Okay, now I have Board Member comments. Anybody?
Board President, I could start?
Yeah. Mr. Schneider.
Thank you. I, I didn't say anything before with the personnel agenda, and Ms. Polakowski, you're back there, and I'd be remiss not to address that. If anyone doesn't know, Ms. Polakowski was actually my eighth, eighth grade English teacher. So when you've been in the district for thirty-eight years, I guess it's possible that your, your student, you know, from eighth grade becomes a board member, so. Two? Who was the other one? Oh, she was two years old, yeah.
What was your grade?
I assume I got an A, but-
You sure?
That's why I'm conflicted, but really, the, uh, people know Ms. Polakowski as a Chief Academic Officer. People know her as a Building Administrator at J.P. Stevens. But the one thing I want everyone to hear is to get to those levels when you're a building principal and a Chief Academic Officer, you, you have to start your career as a teacher. I could tell you firsthand, she was a terrific teacher. And so much so that whether she was in her role now or not, I would remember her. And, and everybody in this room knows what it's like to have a terrific teacher and understand the impact that educators have on all of our lives. And Ms. Polakowski, it should come as no surprise, was one of those people in my life. And going back all those years, I just wanna say thank you publicly. I've thanked you many times privately, but, and I will continue to do so. But publicly, I want everyone to know what a wonderful, wonderful teacher she started out her career as. So thank you for your service. Thirty-eight years is nothing to sneeze at. You know, the personnel agenda tonight is super heavy, right? So you have a thirty-eight-year professional, and then we have a replacement for a fifty-year. So Andy DiNicolò's replacement at J.P. Stevens is being hired on our agenda tonight. And his name is Mr. Henrickson. I apologize if I'm pronouncing that wrong. But think about that, fifty years plus thirty-eight years, eighty-eight years of, of experience in our district and Edison years, right? So it's just so incredible that now, you know, Mr. Henrickson, I understand, is a terrific person and he's gonna do, he's gonna try his best to fill Mr. DiNicolò's shoes. And I would imagine that, you know, Ms. Polakowski's, whoever winds up replacing her at some point will have, you know, huge shoes to fill as well. It's really, really a special time in this district to have this turnover in such a beautiful way, and congratulations again. Just two other comments. This past Saturday, I went to, I came here for the middle school volleyball tournament. And we've talked about it in our Athletic Committee. I know Mr. Patel, Mr. Vishal Patel is integral in, in introducing volleyball to our district. And all four middle schools competed. It was in the two gyms here. And it was just such, there was such energy. If you, if you heard the crowd during some of those matches, it was, it was like, it was a real crazy high school basketball game. Lot of energy, lot of enthusiasm. It's obvious to me. And Vishal, I think you were there as well. I didn't see you, but I heard you were around. You know, it was, it was incredible to see how much enthusiasm there is for volleyball. So I'm happy that we're doing it. It's obvious that the interest is there. And it was a great way to start the program by having these, you know, introducing it as an extracurricular. And finally, one last thing. The AV tonight was just incredible. We sat through a teacher appreciation. And like, I know we keep talking about it, but this board, previous boards should be very proud of themselves to, to upgrade. All schools should have this type of AV. Having that teacher appreciation on these screens with this audio and everything else just really elevated the experience, I think. And certainly, that's what our educators deserve as we honor them. So I just wanted to say, you know, kudos to the board for doing that. And, and we just have to keep going. All of these capital projects are vital to lift up our district. And that's what not only the students, but the educators like tonight deserve. So thank you.
Thank you. Who's, who's next? Mrs. White?
You wanna go? Okay, all right. I too wanted to wish Gail well. I first met Gail as a parent. She was my son's eighth grade teacher, English teacher at Herbert Hoover. As a matter of fact, he kept her, one of her report cards taped to his locker. You know, she was, you know, she was one of his favorite teachers. And we, you know, we, we just loved her always from then right until now. You know, I watched her star rise. She just was just so good at every single thing that she put her hand to. J.P. Stevens, you know, I still think they must, you know, Meredith is a wonderful person. But, you know, Gail was incredible, you know, and for me, it's an honor to know her. You know, I wish her well. And she is gonna be so missed, you know, but, you know, good luck and congratulations, Gail. You're the best. You know, so. And also, you know, I do wanna say that I did go to the first ever combined choirs for J.P. Stevens and Edison High School at the Presbyterian Church. I mean, there are just no words to say how incredibly good they were. And I hope it's something that they, you know, they continue to do yearly. It was just so beautiful. And anybody that was there, you know, you left, you know, you were just in awe of them. They were just incredible. You know, our students were amazing and our staff was incredible, you know, so. If you, you know, next year, I truly hope they do it, you know, so that everybody else can enjoy this just the way that we did. And for Memorial Day, both of our marching bands are going to participate in the parade, J.P. and Edison High. And we also have one of our Edison High School students, and she's gonna be performing the National Anthem at the reviewing stand. So, you know, there was, you know, we have a whole lot going on in the district and in the town for this Memorial Day, you know, weekend. So be safe, enjoy, and, you know, have a blessed weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bureau Patel?
All right, so Memorial Day was my planned last comment, but because Mrs. White just said that. It's because there was no snow, everyone is happy about it. The more reason to be happy is because it'll be Friday and Tuesday off before and after the Memorial Days. Everyone should get out of Edison, breathe some good air, nice air, get fresh and enjoy, and come back to the school for next twenty, twenty-five days to finish the school year in the rocking style. So thank you, Gail, for all your services. As I told you, you know, in the cafeteria earlier, there are no words right now I have to, that how much you'll be missed. That can only be expressed next year when we realize that you are really, really missed by the district, by so many students, alumni, and teachers and administration and everyone else. Congratulations and thank you. And you know what, I agree with everyone who voted no on that, even though I voted yes, because they are right, you know. If there was a way, like our lawyer said, to not have that, we would have planned it and voted no on that, so. But congratulations again. Congratulations to every single teacher and Educational Services Professional of the Year. I know Judy is still here for a wonderful achievement. That's an incredible achievement. The teachers do a lot for our students and the services professionals as well, so it was a great night. The three nights which are best in BOE meetings are the recognition night for all the teachers and educational services professional and the two student recognition nights. So we look forward to see one student recognition night next month, so congratulations again. I wanna make some announcements about students from Woodrow Wilson Middle School. They represented, they participated in science ball competition and won second overall place. And they also won the second place last year. And it was well-recognized and a big achievement for, to get second in the science ball competition. And the team members were Sahil Ghosh, Saeed Kahl, Amar Agpote, Arush Patra, and Mansa Sial. And principal recognized them, but it's a huge achievement. Shifting gears a little bit, we talk about all the different sports, cricket, volleyball and everything. There is something known as Malcom. Not many people ever heard that. But Malcom is basically a sport where gymnasts perform aerial yoga and gymnastic postures. If you Google out, wanna look at it, it's really amazing. So not a lot of people know this really, but I would really like to bring it to everyone's attention that a team of six boys and six girls from Edison traveled all the way to the eastern part of the world, performed in hundred degrees temperature and sometimes more than that. And they played and they won the first overall worldwide. These are Edison students. This is the first competition they ever really played at the international level. So so far, they were trained to go through evaluations, but it was the first time they were participating in the competitions. Some names were Apurva Anandchodri, Rucha Rupesh Kulkarni, Shreya Patankar, Advait Kulkarni, Dean Jayadevan, Murnal Patil, Shlok Chodri, Arusha Bakshi, Uja Supadia, and Gargi Patil. Congrats to all the both, both the boys and girls team. They represented Team USA. When they went from here, they represented Team USA. And all these students, the names that I read, they're from J.P. Stevens, Woodrow Wilson, John Edwards Middle School. So it's incredible achievement from Edison. They, they are first in the world in hundred degrees temperature traveled from there for this Malcom, so really great, proud of all of you. Coming back to Woodrow Wilson again, we had a wonderful celebration for AAPI. Not many people know about that too, but that was the first time ever set of a festival celebration. Amazing performance by students with the collaboration of NJ PAC, the New Jersey Performing Arts Center. And students really did a great performance. It was wonderful to witness that. And Woodrow also had a talent show. This was a part of the tradition. There are so many winners, which includes singing, dancing, music, music instrument, performing arts, digital, Rubik's Cube. So not only just arts, but many other performances. And some amazing winners who came top were Sahil Ghosh, Ariana Ramos, Aditya Katimani, Gautam Rajesh, and Deepesh Chindra. So congrats to every single student who make us feel proud. And I'm pretty sure to look forward to a whole bunch of list of students along with the ODC of the Mind and other clubs and everyone else who does great next month. We will have a wonderful night next month. So everyone in the public, please do participate whether, you know, your children did get the awards or recognition or not. It's really great to see the spread, the energy of the students. So everyone have a wonderful Memorial Day weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mohin Patel?
Thank you, Board President. First of all, I wanna congratulate all the teachers that do an amazing job for teaching our future generations. And I would appreciate everything that you guys do. Thank you so much. I wanna also congratulate Gail on your retirement. Thank you for all the years of service that you have given to this school district. We greatly, greatly, greatly appreciate everything you have done. Thank you so much. I wanna also say that in, just to add on to what the Bureau said about the Woodrow Wilson AAPI function that we had. The kids are very talented. We have some amazing talented kids in our school district. And when we highlight what they do and their talent, it brings joy to my eyes because I see that there's so much potential in every single student that we have in our, in our school district. And when we can acknowledge that, that's amazing. I wanna also thank from NJ PAC, Ayesha Merbel and Marcus Beckett for coming out here and bringing talent and production teams to make sure that, you know what? They recognize also that the up-and-coming talent is out there and how to go about to engage with the community, to get that talent and grow with. So I wanna thank them as well. I also wanna thank Segunda and the team from HSS for providing such an amazing event this weekend in appreciation of some, some of the teachers that are in our district. They did a fantastic job. I greatly appreciate for the invite. Thank you so much. This is the third year that I was pleased to attend and for your invitation. Guru Vandana basically is the appreciation of teachers. Guru, teachers, basically what they've done is basically, basically said that, hey, listen, for the years of service we have and bow down to what you have given us, and that's their appreciation. Thank you so much for that. And other than that, thank you all for attending. I appreciate you.
Thank you. Aside? Any comments, Mr. Rivera?
Yeah, I just have a few comments. First of all, I can't speak about Gail the way that Doug spoke about Gail. You know, that was tremendous, dude. I only known Gail for one year, but the one year that I've known you, I want to let you know you were very impactful to me being on this board, but also as a professional. Because you know what I do for a living. So your guidance and your train of thought and everything that you do, your professionalism, it was much appreciated. So you might have taught him in middle school, but you just taught a forty-five-year-old, so I appreciate that. The second thing I wanted to say was congratulate all the educators, but also the educational service professionals. We keep forgetting about them. You guys work very hard with our children. I wanna let you know that I do appreciate it. Also, the Parent Academy idea, I think it's a phenomenal idea. It's something that we do in our district. I think the parents here would appreciate it. In my particular district, we talk, we teach our kids, we teach our kids and adults because we do provide services for our children while the, while the adults are getting these classes. But they're learning ESL, they're learning, they're having citizenship courses and stuff like that. I think this community would, would love that, that aspect of it, so I hope it moves forward. Also, I just wanted to wish all the families and staff a wonderful Memorial Day weekend. But I also want them to take a moment to honor our military personnel, those who have fought for our country and those who have passed away. You know, sometimes we look at Memorial Day as the barbecue and getting together with our families. But I think we need, you know, my, my father, who was a Vietnam vet, my- But I think we need, you know, my, my father, who was a Vietnam vet, my two uncles who were Vietnam vets, all drafted. I honored their services. So I think we need to recognize all of our vets out there and enjoy the hot dogs, enjoy the hamburgers, but understand that we need to remember those. So again, thank you.
Well said, Brian. I apologize. I forgot to say thank you to all our veterans as well. Thank you for the years of service and dedication to our country. Thank you.
Thank you. No, Mr. Shi?
I just want to echo what Mohin said. I want to thank the HSS for hosting the Guru Vandana event. And, and that was probably my fourth time attending the event. Teacher appreciation, they did a fantastic job. And congratulations to all the winners, you know, the Teacher of the Year and the Air Service Professionals of the Year. We can see not only they're here, their families are here. The support from their family should not be, you know, discounted. Without the support from their family, you know, they, they probably could not get to whatever they're doing here. So I want to also thank to all those family members of these teachers and, and Air Service Professionals. And, you know, Gail, I voted no for your retirement. I just don't want you to go, that's all. Okay? So I have known you for many years since my kids started in, you know, in high school. I don't have a lot of close interactions between, you know, for the, my kids getting to the principal's office. But I do see you, I go to a lot of the events and I do see you around. All those volleyball games and band competitions and all of that. And I live close by, and I saw that when I pass JP Stevens, I see the Ford Explorer is parked there all the time, the first spot. So you're in the school and your presence, then just like Mrs. Conway mentioned, you're always there, always there. So, you know, it's just, we're going to miss you and wishing you a happy retirement. As far as on the teacher appreciation, I mentioned last time that we do select these teachers and Air Service Professionals to appreciate what they have done. And I suggested that also maybe we can look into selecting one person from the Education Center. They also provide service to the students, to the community, the transportation, the enrollment and then whatever. Even the, the building secretary, when people go in to ask questions and this stuff. So if we can look into that for next year, if we can expand that, because I asked last year, I guess people forgot it. Or if, if there is a valid reason that, that, you know, the board or the administrations thinks there is a, someone that worse needs to be recognized, I would appreciate, appreciate that we recognize that person from the Education Center as well. And that's it.
Thank you. Okay, now it's time for, I think I'll, yeah, I see some, Joe, do you have any comments?
Not at all.
I don't either. I see some audience. I don't want to keep you guys waiting, so let's just start the public comment. That lady right there, yeah.
Good evening, Mr. Superintendent, Madam President and Board Members. I am Dimple Malhotra, parent of a seventh grader at Woodrow Wilson Middle School. I'm here to raise major concerns on the new scheduling changes that have been brought. Helping me raise this change, concerns along with me are the parents of middle school and a lot, many of them who are also watching live stream. Unfortunately, they can't ask the questions because the chat is closed for them. Some of the highlights of new scheduling are introduction of a new non-credit, no instructional period called a win period added to the scheduling. Now doing so, the students will have eight periods instead of seven, and this is made possible by reducing core class times, passing time, and lunchtime. According to the flyer shared, this is an unmonitored period where students are allowed to do anything they choose to. Except for music students, all other students will have a win period every day for forty minutes. Music students will have, non-music students will have one semester of win period. Is my understanding correct here? Now, as a parent of Edison School Board, Edison School, I would expect the school and the board to be transparent and inclusive of parents when making such major changes. None of these changes were communicated to parents up until the last couple of weeks when counselors had already finalized the schedule. Now, on the look of it, the way it has been designed, you know, reducing five minutes of instruction time from every period, from every core class, the children will be, you know, the instruction time is reduced by five periods. So let's put this in perspective. For every closed class, children will be losing fifteen hours of instruction time over a year, fifteen hours. With seven core classes over a year, they'll be losing hundred and five hours of instruction time. And fifteen hours of losing the time has a huge impact in learning. How are teachers going to make up fifteen hours of loss of time? Now, with the reduction of such instructional time, students are going to get loaded with both classwork and homework. This is going to have a huge impact, not only in their learning, but also in their performance with potential gaps in understanding the concepts. As a result, our children will be overworked and exhausted. Oftentimes, when I, when I talk to teachers, they say, oh, I wish I was able to teach the students the way I want to. They're finding it very challenging and difficult to justify teaching the curriculum within the current circumstances itself. So they can provide detailed feedbacks to all the students. You know, the rubric is scored and that is how the students knows how much they are, how, what is their performance. They only get to know the results. But they're not able to, teachers are not able to provide proper feedback, one-on-one feedback to the students. What about the exams? With same rigor, same test time, same tests, but reduced time, there is lot to expect from students and from teachers as well. The another change is electives are semester-based. Now, looking at the schedule, looking at the rubric that was shared with the parents, there is a bias in how electives are designed. Music students' time looks like more invested than non-music students. Students need an full year to make their effective, more effective and to get a considerable program, progress from them. Now, electives bring out other strengths and passions in student which academics can't provide. So electives are crucial. Now, how are we achieving all this? So our hallways are already, are all, already crowded. My son has alternate classes, one class on the second floor, the second class on the first floor, and then again he has to go to the second floor and so on. It was exhausting to go from one end to the another level, and he's always seems to be in rush. Lunch lines are already long. Students don't end up getting enough time to finish their lunches. How is lunchtime going, how is reducing lunchtime going to help in such a situation? It's only going to make it worse. Now, let's put the perspective of the win period, especially taking it, you know, for non-music students, forty minutes of win period every day, which is equivalent to one twenty hours of loss of instructional time, one twenty hours. What compelling reasons or value is win period adding to compensate for the loss of instruction time? How is win period benefiting our students? Now, you know, with the help of our parents and we created a survey just, you know, a few, few hours ago to find out, you know, what is, what do the parents think about the new scheduling? And we had, we got some fifty, some parents respond to that within the amount of one hour. Ninety-seven percent, percentage of them like are in the favor of non, not reducing instructional time. They strongly feel that win period is not adding any value to the scheduling. Today, schools are responsible for so many things, challenging curriculum, effective instructions, meeting social and emotional needs of students. We urge and request Board of Ed to empower students with proper tools to flourish in schools. We hereby strongly oppose the current scheduling. We would like to propose that we do not want a reduction in instruction time, perhaps remove the win time or make the win period as an afterclub activity. And please bring back all electives full year in full year schedule. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening and namaste to all. My name is Shilpa Shahane, and I am a proud resident of Edison. I first, I appreciate Edison Board's efforts to recognize the teachers and congratulations to all teachers who were recognized today. Today, I am here to representing Hindu Swamvayam Sangha, HSS. HSS USA is a five zero one C three voluntary nonprofit social, educational, and cultural organization. We have two hundred and thirty-five chapters in one hundred and sixty-four cities in thirty-four states in United States. HSS fosters a sense of civic duty, care of community, responsibility, volunteerism, and an understanding of selfless service through activity, outreach programs, and food donation drives such as Seva Diwali and Yoga Programs. To celebrate the teachers' appreciation, HSS chapters have been organized an annual event called Guru Vandana for the last ten years. Guru in Sanskrit means teacher, spiritual master and mentor. Vandana means greeting to the teacher, and that is say it is an expression of love, gratitude, reverence toward the teacher. Teachers play a critical role in educating, shaping our children into future leaders of our country. These kind, patient, hard-working, dedicated and understanding professionals help mold our children and guide them in positive directions. We entrust our children with teachers during the school year, and they play a pivotal role in their daily lives. This year, HSS chapters of Edison invited the teachers for Guru Vandana. We were very fortunate to have forty teachers attending. In addition, Edison Mayor, Mr. Sam Joshi, Edison Board Member, Jerry Ishi, and Mr. Mohin Patel, and Woodbridge Board of Education Member, Mr. Akshat Sidhana, graced the event. Guru Vandana started with lighting the lamp, kids did dances and skits as per a part of our culture representation. We also conducted some games which all teachers enjoyed playing. Teacher felicitation was done in the traditional way by applying tilak and touching the teacher's feet to seek blessings, which denotes ultimate surrender to the guru and the knowledge that he or she provides. We had fun photo booths too. Teacher enjoyed doing garba with all families, which is traditional dance from India. We concluded the program with delicious Indian delicacies. On behalf of HSS, I humbly bow to all teachers and board members present here and look forward to have a healthy partnership. Thank you and dhannavyata.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to continue with the win period issue. It's a, if to put in perspective, a twelve-and-a-half percent reduction in a student's educational time is not something that is just trivial. Okay, it reduces from them, okay, the opportunity to learn. It puts pressure on the teachers to finish the curriculum in a shorter period of time, especially when it's a known fact that not all teachers finish their curriculum in all the schools, in, sorry, in some of the subjects. The students are under pressure to self-learn, okay? While the win period would definitely provide an opportunity to self-learn, I would like to think of it as a wide spectrum, one end of which are students, most of the students who would use that to just be on their phones, talk to everyone else. And we've seen that happening time and again with every experience when they are left alone to do nothing. The second thing that baffles me is the communication aspect of this win period thing. I don't know what the trigger for this was. Some people say it was financial, budget restraints, constraints, whatever. I do not, in my sense of financial knowledge that I have, see any ways how budgets are being saved or being increased by doing the win period. I see additional burden on the school because when kids are uncontrolled, there could be other issues to be tackled out there. What I also don't understand is, some, some people said that there are surveys that has been taken in order to take this decision. I believe this is, and the survey was done only on the eighth grade by the limited knowledge that I have. It seems to be a biased survey, a response biased survey. If you ask kids, what do they want to do, they would say nothing. The standard answer is, what did you do in school? Nothing. How was school? Good. It's the standard response, and that is what we were, we were trying to get from them. Then the survey was very biased, to my understanding. All said and done, not only is the end result not acceptable, what is also not acceptable is the process in which it was done. Parents are a bigger stakeholder in this. The kids are not yet adults. We should have been concerned about it. We should have been communicated about it. What I would request is a reversal of this decision, okay? At the least, I would want no reduction in instructional time. The average instructional time in US schools is fifty minutes. We already are reducing it forty minutes, given the fact that we waste five minutes, practical fact that we waste five minutes going in between classes. We are again reducing it to thirty-five minutes and reducing again by that five minutes of travel time to each of the classes, which brings it to thirty minutes. Okay, that's, that's just sixty minutes of the average that we are talking. Even if I take thirty-five minutes, it's seventy percent of the average school time that we are taking. And we are supposed to be one of the elitist school district in the United States. So hence, my request to reverse the decision without any reduction in instructional time and also a request to restore it prior to the end of the school year. Thank you.
Do you, do you want us to address the first, this issue first, or do you want, do you have similar issues? You want to?
There's the same issues.
A different one? Okay. Can you let us address this thing first? Sorry. Dr. Adrily, you want to?
Yep. So listen, I, I, I completely understand the hesitation and, and resistance to this, you know. When, and first of all too, you know, one of the, one of the common themes that I'm hearing, especially I guess from both parents here is that the communication was something that was obviously an issue, right? So I do apologize for that. We should definitely do a better job of that. The first point of contact would always be your building principal. They're, they're going to be your point of contact for explaining any types of nuances with your, with your child's schedule. That being said, from a district perspective, we can, I know, I know we put out some material, but from what I'm understanding is you don't have a full detailed understanding of, of how the, the eight-period schedule is going to work. Couple components, there's definitely a reduction in time. That's, that's something that's accurate. But it's consistent with what our current high schools do. I think it's the exact same time, and we've been successful there. The allocation of minutes also, those timeframes are consistent with all of the surrounding middle schools in our area, give or take a minute or two, including passing time. I think one of the key pieces is that we were, we were looking to address a problem. And maybe not even a problem, but, but something that had been brought up over the course of multiple years with regards to last year's schedule and the AB schedule. I'd like to think that not only this board, but our administrators did take feedback from the community. One of the things that we did hear is that students wanted access to the following. They wanted more continuity in their music instruction, more continuity in their, their approach to world language. This schedule def, definitely delivers that. It provides immersed understanding in a target language as well as a full opportunity for children to engage in music. The, the, the one component that I heard about that win period is that students would be on their phone during that timeframe. It's an unsupervised time. That, that's a messaging problem on our part. There's, there's definitely learning taking place. That's not a, that's not a period in which learning is not taking place. Students are going to have the opportunity for remediation, enrichment, to work on things that are interesting to them, to, to catch up on missed assignments for students that are absent. That's, that's a perfect opportunity to make up tests and quizzes too. This is probably a larger conversation, more so than this board meeting. And it is getting a little late, and I do apologize, this is a, this is a long meeting. I think we created a period for students to have opportunities beyond the norms of the regular schedule. I'm confident that we're delivering a high quality product and I, and I believe the board is in agreement with that as well too. One of the things I'd like to do is, is maybe after this meeting, touch base, get some names and formulate a little bit more of an in-depth discussion with regards to this, if that's acceptable.
Thank you.
Board President, can I add something?
I'm in.
Sure.
Sure.
Please. So in regard to...
Mr. Virela, you, you can go first.
All right, like I understand these parents' concerns. As someone who does scheduling for a living, I get it. So we changed the scheduling with an eight period day because we did have parent concerns in regards to music and language.
Yes.
That was the other half that came and did their issues. Now we're having parents coming in who are not interested in the music program, they're not interested in the language program, they're interested in other electives. So I think the issue is, we targeted one area, but we didn't target the other population that has other interests.
I, I don't believe electives were changed either.
I'm, I'm asking.
Yeah, I, 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 I don't, electives, that's probably...
Because that's what she just said.
Sure.
That's not true. She had a misunderstanding.
So I, I think that's part of the messaging and the communication though too. So I, we, we need to do a better job with that. Rather than, rather than go for a back and forth right here, once the meeting's end, I'll, I'll come on down.
You would have to wait until the second, but Vishal, do you have anything to say or I can?
I, I think a lot of information that both the candidates spoke has, it's misinformation. Lot of misinformation, lot of numbers are wrong. You completely, I mean, you clearly don't have a picture. I know I met some of the parents who tried to give that picture. I know not a follow, not all of you were able to make it. I, I would suggest, let's meet with Eddie, get the complete picture and see, take it from there.
I'll just give a, a high level, my part of this, right? So maybe you guys don't know the background of this. So prior to last year, our middle school has in a lang, foreign language and music every other day. We call it AB schedule. And last year it was changed, the AB schedule was changed to semester. So your kids would have music for one semester every day and the language, foreign language for the other semester every day. And that obviously didn't work well because we heard a lot of parents complaining about that. Apparently, you know, when you don't practice your music instrument or you don't practice your foreign language for five, six months, you're just not as proficient as someone else who practices every other day. So this year, the board has worked really hard with our administration to come up with this new eighth period schedule. And the most, number one benefit is yes, both our music students and our foreign language students, the, first of all, sixth graders would have their AB schedule back. They would have every, music and foreign language every other day. Our seventh and eighth graders are going to have foreign language and music every day for the entire year. So that's a huge benefit. I, and I have to tell you guys, you know, last year when we heard a lot of complaints, the music teacher, because we have an excellent music program in, in our high school, the music teacher actually last year has to pull off some of the students from regular classes to practice their instrument so that they don't lose much. And I have to applaud for those music teachers for putting extra effort in helping out our students. So that was a miss in my mind, in my opinion, last year. So we make these adjustments this year. Actually, this is, I know it's hard for people to, you know, accept some new concept, but this concept I believe is going to benefit, benefit every students. First of all, the, the class time was cut, yes, four minutes. And I, I, we did research. I know that Melbourne and Livingston, one of, two of the top school district in our, in New Jersey, both have 42, 43 minutes class for middle school. And 42 minutes is the same time as our high school students. So I'm sure if a high school teacher can make their curriculum into 42 minutes in high school, our middle school teacher is definitely capable of doing that. So I don't think instruction is, is a loss, but plus with that win period, first of all, only a few students are going to be impacted, are going to actually have a win period. Second, the win period is going to be a supervised period. It's not like a free period that students can, you know, do anything. And we are trying, that just opened up a lot of opportunities for our students. For example, we are thinking about doing a quick workshops, seminars, online courses, and even yoga. So besides doing, you know, homework and preparing for tests. And if you took, take a look at this, you know, it's going to actually benefit both side, all sides of students. So for students who's overachieving, they would use this time to take some new tasks, learning something new. And for students who's been challenged, have feel the challenge, they can take this time to have individualized targeted tutorial or help from the teachers. So in my mind, I, I, I think this is going to really be a game changer for our middle school. Not only we have better program for music and foreign language, we're going to have better program for everybody else. Like always, like we can have maybe online robotics program, other electives that they have, the students can do, public speaking, debates, all those are becoming a possibility right now. And you, you, you are not losing the electives this year, by the way. So that's something that we can discuss of course offline. So I hope that answers some of the, your questions. If not, you know, we can talk later.
First time is only.
We have to let first time parents making public comments that you can come back for second time.
On the same issue or another issue?
You can come back for the same issue, yes, but you got to wait until all first timers finish their comments. Thank you.
So I was about to just, I figure I just take the wind out of everyone's, everyone's sails because I'm going to change the vibe a little bit. But I have to say, and I know that I'm unqualified, but I have to say that as a musician and as a mom with, who speaks a few languages with my child, huge approval, thank you, all of you. Thank you so much for making sure that they got to keep the full year education for foreign language and music. It's, it's critical. And, and in all honesty, a free period for my child and for a lot of other kids and students that I talk with, it has been critical for their mental health in all honesty and their enrichment. It gives them a time to study or relax. Most importantly, they need to re, they need to recharge for a little bit. But I'm unqualified, I don't need to speak about this. So I apologize, I took some of that time for you there. So good evening, properly Superintendent Dr. Alderelli.
Sorry to interrupt, would you mind say your name?
Oh, sure, of course.
Thank you.
So my name is Matroka Tachitani. I am a proud Edison High School mom. I'm also very proud to serve as the president of the Edison High School Orchestra Parents Association. I will then bypass all the formalities, just know that I am formally greeting all of you and I have met a few of you in the past. So disclaimer, I am new to this, so forgive me if I have any breach in protocol, like not remembering to give you my name. So I should tell you, I had originally prepared a long spiel, a long talk for all of you because I wanted to very diplomatically and respectfully and gently implore upon all of you to look into the possibility of expanding our orchestra room here, our sorely dismal, neglected, forgotten orchestra room. But I did have a very lovely pleasure of meeting Dr. Alderelli earlier. So we got to talk and he got to see exactly what my concerns were. So we can thank him and, and you can all be spared of my loquaciousness. And instead, I am just going to speak a little bit on behalf of the orchestra that's often forgotten. Even our young Miss Ahmed, Serena Ahmed, completely forgot to mention to you that our orchestra concert will be held here tomorrow night as well, just like JP Stevens. So I, not right now, I'm just going to take the opportunity to formally and cordially invite you to listen to our orchestra and come attend the spring concert tomorrow night. It's called A Night in Hollywood. And it will just be providing you just an hour of really gorgeous and lush orchestral music from our kids. By the way, that young man is our principal violist who also happens to be my son. That's our mom. So he's waited with me for a while so that he could just give you the programs. We've worked very hard on them with a lot of local sponsors because I'm always trying to garner support for the kids. If you were at the teacher ceremony earlier, you would have also seen him playing the viola during that time. But anyway, so now that you've got the programs, I just wanted to, I, I want to just introduce you to, you know, what the kids have planned for you for tomorrow night. Hopefully that can act as a teaser. It is really gorgeous. You, you are going to be, to be blown away. And really, my goal is have you come and let the, the passion, the discipline, the hard work that these kids have put in with their director, Mrs. Brittany Militia, let it touch you so that you can understand how hard it's been for them to even prepare for this concert when their room is so small and they're literally being tossed around in different locations trying to find a rehearsal space and rehearsal time. And spoiler alert, we even have some student performances for tomorrow. The students have decided to prepare a couple pieces on their own for our audience, so you're going to be amazed. And that's it. Thank you so much for listening. Thank you for your time and thank you for all the work that you put in as volunteers. I, having joined the foray this year, can't, I can't appreciate your hard work enough. So I have no words for that. So thank you.
Board President.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mohin Patel?
I want to say thank you for bringing up all that information. You are very well spoken and this is amazing, by the way. Thank you so much for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Then Mr. Shi.
So just so you know, we did not forget the orchestra, okay? So I, I don't know what the Dr. Alderelli had shared with you. We have asked our architect to design the expansion of JP Stevens, not JP Stevens, the Edison High School, Edison High School expansion, this board, this board, okay? JP Stevens, we're expansion, we're expanding their orchestra room to 2,000, 2,000 square foot room. So we're going to do the same here. So they're going to talk to the principals, they're going to talk to the, to the leadership in this building to see what is missing. Original plan was about 10 classroom. Right now, we are looking about 20 rooms, okay? Not only classrooms, rooms, it could be anything. So we did not forget orchestra, okay? And you know, although my kids were in, in the band, but I have always attended orchestra and, and I love the, the music and just so you know, it's coming. And I wish it came earlier, but this board is committed to not only build gyms, but also classrooms. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I appreciate that, only because in this room has been changed.
We, we got it, yeah. Yeah, thank you.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Chippriyan Kirnaga. And I would like to address the Board of Education to dispute the limit of three excused religious holiday absences. I'm not sure exactly when this decision was made, so perhaps not by this board, perhaps many of you didn't, didn't directly contribute to this decision, but this is something that I've been following for many years and I see some discrepancies with New Jersey state law. And I would quote here the title 18A, section 3615, and I would also include 36-14 and 36-16. And I would quote 36-15, which says that any absence because of religious holidays shall be recorded as excused absence on the people's attendance record. And I'll skip a bit here, show and on any transcripts, show show with respect to absences, only absences other than absences excused because of religious holidays. And I, and the quote. Now, if you put this in perspective, so if a child misses, goes past that limit, yes, it takes for instance, four or five holidays, those extra days are put in his attendance record. And this goes directly against the law, okay? And moreover, there is no stipulation in the law allowing the Board of Ed to instate any limitations to the aforementioned title. The only changes the Board of Ed is allowed to make regard the extension of the state approved list of religious holidays according to the religious needs of the student body, okay? So now through this self-imposed limit and the choice of no session days built into the school calendar and the actions of the administration enforcing these rules, the Board of Ed indirectly encourages discrimination, both religious and educational, between different religious groups. By not having to show homework the next day, student whose holiday is built into the calendar as a no session day, has a clear competitive advantage over other students who have to show homework that needs to be done during their celebrated holiday. Thus, even the holiday is not entirely enjoyed. Moreover, the former does not have to keep count of how many days they need to take off before being punished for a right which is protected by the New Jersey law. And I'm not sure if this is a lack of thought or anything like that, but this makes it so hard, this makes it so that some students are encouraged to celebrate their holidays while others are punished for taking them. So I have assisted for more than 24, 20 years, well, more precisely 24 years to the limitations the Board of Education tried to bring to the law, as well as continual changes to the number of no session holidays introduced into the calendar. The only conclusion I can draw is that while some changes are welcome, most of them though keep the balance toward bias and lack of representation. So I wish you to reconsider the way you look at this limit because you are in direct violation of the New Jersey state law. So this limit should not be in there. Thank you very much.
So this religious holiday, you're saying we have a limitation, limit?
Yes, it is in the student handbook.
Yes.
If it was that handbook, you approve it as a Board of Education.
And you know, maybe, maybe after this, we'll talk online. I, I don't, that limit doesn't apply to religious holidays, so...
Well, actually it does. My son has been just told this in school, okay?
Then we can touch base after that. I'm not sure what school your child attends, but...
It's JP Stevens.
We'll, we'll make sure that's corrected.
I, I always had trouble with those. One year I had to fight for something. Okay, look, I celebrate on Julian calendar, that is these, that doesn't perhaps matter.
I fully understand, I think this is a misinterpretation of what's in the handbook currently right now.
The handbook says...
I'm not saying it...
And it was confirmed by the vice principal attendance, vice principal about attendance people. So it's not just one confirmation from official staff of the school.
Let's touch base after.
I think we could talk afterwards and we can, we'll look into this. I, yeah.
Thanks.
Mr. Cambio?
Hello, Susan Cambioni, H shift for court. I want to start out by congratulating all the teachers and ESPs that were here tonight. It's always nice to celebrate them. I've worked with many and congratulate all of them. But I do agree with you, Mr. Shi, that there are ESPs in the district, not only the, at the Ed Center, the school secretaries, custodians, bus drivers, they all contribute to the school and it would be nice if they could be recognized by the board also. We have asked several times, but you know, the powers are in there now, which is good, but there are other ESPs that are not recognized. I also wanted to take a minute to congratulate Gail on her retirement. I sent three children through JP Stevens and Gail was always very professional, so well spoken. And one of the most important things that always sticks out to me, to my own children as well as their friends, she was always open to students. I think probably even more so than the parents to listen to their concerns and what ideas that they had and that was always appreciated by the parents and congratulations. And congratulations. As the ETA Scholarship Chair, I just wanted to let the Board know that winners were picked for both high schools. I don't want to release their names yet because I will be presenting the awards here on Thursday night and then at JP Stevens in June. It's always amazing to see what our students are doing, how much they do besides their rigorous schooling. We wish we could give scholarships to all of them. The one disappointment, and I'm a little worried because we do give out a future teacher award, and the applications each year at both high schools is really shrinking, and sometimes we don't even have any from a high school. So, I'm hoping that that changes because it makes me worry that some of, that our students are not going into education. So, I really do hope that that changes, and we will make sure, even maybe just district-wide, next year, we get the word out to all of the parents through an email or something besides guidance, just to make sure that everyone knows that these scholarships are available. And lastly, I want to give a shout-out. Matt Flores was a JP student and a castmate of my daughter's in the theater. And if you ever saw him perform, you knew he was just something special. And he's going to be making his Broadway debut in Here Lies Love. It's a brand-new production, The Amel DeMarco Story. It's the first all-Filipino cast that will be on Broadway, and it opens for previews in July, and hopefully, some of you, I have my tickets for August, and I can't be more proud of him and excited for him. And I just was overjoyed when he called with the news that he was going to be on Broadway. So, congratulations, Matt, and I hope you can all come see him. Thank you.
Thank you. Beth?
Good evening, Beth Chalky. First of all, congratulations to Gail once again. I'll reiterate what everybody else said. You've always been professional, very knowledgeable, and always present. For all the years my kids went through JP Stevens, you were there. I was there with band programs. We were there some nights till 1:00 in the morning, and you were still there supporting our kids. And on the weekends, I appreciate it, and you will be greatly, greatly missed. I would also be remiss if I did not discuss Andy D. Nicola, who will be retiring shortly, and I'm kind of heartbroken about it. I was his student way back when, when he first started at Woodrow Wilson, as well as my five siblings. We all went through the band programs through JP Stevens, as well as my three students. And my daughter, to this day, she pursued a career. She is a music teacher, as well as, you know, performance. He's a very humble man, but throughout his career there at JP Stevens, when he was called up to go there from Woodrow Wilson, there was only 30 people in the band. Over his 50-year tenure, he has created multiple bands, jazz bands, wind ensembles, marching band, to well over 240, 250 kids plus. He probably also doesn't want to know, in 2013, he was a top-10 finalist. I believe he was in the top three, don't hold me to it, but I'm pretty sure he was, for the first-ever Grammy Music Education Award. And then in 2019, he was inducted into the American Bandmasters Association. Our program at JP Stevens is nationally known and renowned because of his influence that he has had on our students and as well as a teacher and a conductor that he is. Fun fact, he is a left-hand conductor, and most conductors are right-handed.
Oh, I didn't know that.
You didn't know that, yeah, Jerry, after all these years. Not only was he a phenomenal music instructor, director to these kids, he was always present. The 50 years that he has been in our district, he has not wavered for his support for our kids. His doors are always open before 7:00 a.m., so those kids can get there before school starts if they wanted practice time or just needed a place to be. He was even there till at least minimum of 6:00 o'clock on nights, if not later, when they had all their band practices and competitions and concerts. He was always there. He was a great, he is a great role model for our kids. They respect him. He respects our kids. It's going to be hard to replace him, and that all that he's done, I wish him well. I will miss him. I will miss the concerts there. But I'm sure, from all of his expertise that he has shown, I'm sure John Zazali and Ray Henrickson will do a good job in continuing on what he has started and brought to our schools. I'll miss you, Dean. Bye.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, can I go on my other rant now? Now I have my other little rant. Sorry about that. I forgot, because I just got caught up, because I'm very upset about Dean leaving. A little bit of the cricket stuff. Okay, you said that we were going to get private pay donations for this. What is the difference between getting private pay and then donating the money? Because something tells me if they're private paying, that we're going to have to kind of owe something back, or somebody else is going to have to use the fields other than our students.
No.
No.
No?
No. As I said, in my opinion, I hope the Board would agree with us, with me, that it doesn't matter how much you donate or you helped, you're still, you know, once it becomes our, it's our property, it's our field.
Okay, and it was also brought up tonight that now, this year, it's going back that the Board of Ed is deciding the scheduling of these fields and when these, I guess the adult teams can use them. Was that voted on by this Board? Because I don't remember seeing it all year at all, so I don't know how that came into fruition. That's one of my questions. Number two, we talked about the survey. Was a survey put out to see what the interest is in the schools for our students? Not for the adult leagues, because I know there's a, you know, big number for that. But what about our students in the school? Has a survey gone out to see what the numbers actually are before we put this investment into our schools, into the fields, and plus, you know, digging up the field some more? If it's going to be more, are the adults going to benefit, or are our students going to benefit? And I know it was also brought up about, is it part of our curriculum? Yes, it is, and the schools that I've been in over my 19 years, it's part of the striking unit in gym. So, they've done like, you know, cricket, baseball, tennis, so forth. So, yes, it has been part of the curriculum. There are some, I know a couple of the middle schools right now, I think TJ and Woodrow Wilson have like the early morning club. I know at the one school, there's not many students who are partaking in it. I'm not sure what TJ's numbers are. But before we go into this, let's make sure it's benefiting our kids, and before we start, you know, changing our fields and stuff that are also used for gym classes for all of our students, that there is a want for it. Yes, Mohan, you seem.
Well, wait, wait, wait. I'm the facility chair, okay? Let me address this. Why don't we wait till the master plan, then you can come over and make your comments? Because whatever you comment is not correct. Why don't we wait? Wait a week?
Which comment is incorrect, Jerry? I'm just asking questions to find out.
The master plan is going to address a lot of the fielding needs over here, okay?
But have we put out a survey to see how many students actually want to play?
We have done many, many years before, okay?
What about currently?
Why do I have to keep surveying the kids multiple times? We, let's face it, right? The traditional sports of the football and baseball, the interest is coming down.
Yes.
The demographic, you know?
Okay, but we'll talk about demographics.
Why don't you ask your questions? When you're done, I'll answer your question.
Okay, but you just brought up demographics. We've had demographics before. We have a very...
Jerry, I think we, Beth, are you done with your comments?
Well, my last comment is, how much are these adult leagues being charged to use our school fields? And something was brought up about us servicing the fields for adults. And I'm not sure why that's our priority when it should be servicing and using the fields for our students first.
It's always been for the students first, and it'll always be for the students first. Every time you want to bring up this cricket issue all the time, because it's something that you want to do, it's politics.
Because it seems like depending on how the Board of Ed goes, it is politics right now, Mohan, and you are running again, correct?
Doesn't matter what, if I am or not, it's not the question. The question is, we're always said that the cricket fields will be for the students first, period. I don't understand why you have.
And why at some of the schools, excuse me.
When the townships.
Well, there's no back and forth.
Excuse me, but when some of the schools, the middle schools, are using their fields right now after school for scheduled gaming, that they're being pushed off by some adult leagues playing cricket. But I also ask, how much are we charging the adult leagues now to utilize our fields? And what are they getting for that cost? And my last quick thing was, also, I've asked about this numerous times, we're talking about the different properties in town. We own the property on Calvert Avenue. I know it's not that big, but we've got it there. Have we looked into what can be done there? We already own that building. What's going on with that? Thank you.
So, first of all, the scenario that you described, that kids were pushing off the fields because adults were playing there, that should never happen. If that happens, someone needs to notify the school, and we will address it immediately. And in terms of Calvert, I don't know where we are. John, you have any updates?
Yeah, so DMR has been engaged, DMR Architectural, one of the Board Architects has been engaged to take a look at that property in terms of the feasibility of retrofitting the site into usable classroom and/or demolishing and erecting a new building to develop classrooms. So, they're going to be taking a look at both options and presenting that to the Finance and Facilities Committee.
Thanks.
Thank you. The lady there, yeah.
Good evening. My name is Jean Crestle. I was here, I guess, March, the March meeting, possibly, trying to keep alive the ACES program. Just to give you a little background on what it was, it's children that were picked in the seventh grade to go into eighth grade and then end up into high school through the four years. Basically, it was to strengthen the kids academically. They would get their own guidance counselor in high school, help with SATs, college essays, learn study skills, and actually get a higher level of learning. This was dissolved this year for whatever, this was dissolved this year for what reason, I don't know. I've got, I've asked for a meeting. The only meeting I got was 24-hour notice to have a Zoom meeting. They asked me on Monday if I would meet with the parents at a Zoom meeting 24 hours later at 3:00 p.m. So, I ask you, could you all get together within 24 hours and meet at 3:00 p.m. for a Zoom meeting? I didn't get any meeting. I got some phone calls from various members, all of them saying something different. Once, what, one said was budget, but we had the budget the year before, so why can't they have the budget next year? I got another excuse saying that, well, the kids are going to get a study hall instead. That's beneficial, study hall. Then I got another excuse saying that, oh, we're going to incorporate it into your social studies program. So, you're going to take the social studies program, the teacher's going to have to take her curriculum away, and do all this that they did this year, and incorporate that into one class. So, I'm still, I still don't have any reason why it's being dissolved. Furthermore, it's the only, only program that is given to children who are not honors, the only one. So, why is it being taken away? I don't understand.
Okay, I'm just waiting for, if you finish your comment, we'll answer your question.
The last comment I have is, the children went on a few trips this year. They're actually going to the Minnesota Building tomorrow, and they're going to have lunch with the mayor. So, what are they going to tell the mayor? Sorry, I can't see you next year. It's going to be dissolved. I'm asking you to help me keep this program alive.
Are you finished?
I'm finished.
Done with your comments, then we can answer.
I know you emailed me a couple weeks ago. I owe you a phone call and a meeting, so that's definitely going to take place. I'm going to reach out to you tomorrow. And I saw a lot of the correspondence that went back and forth with regards to that.
It's a wonderful program. The teachers are phenomenal.
Let's entertain some time. I owe you a phone call.
I know, but I've been asking since February.
You're going to get it.
And a couple more weeks, the school is going to be, the school year is going to be over.
You're going to get it this week. I'm not going to give you 24-hour notice, and we'll make sure that it's convenient within your schedule.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
Good evening. Judy McQuillan. I'm losing my voice, sorry. I have a couple of quick questions that hopefully you'll be able to answer for me. I understand that effective June 1st, we are outsourcing our substitute teachers. And I understand that we have such a lack of substitutes in this district, but I have a couple of, I have a couple of questions. The first question is, I know all of the current substitutes, and I'm assuming anyone from this company will have to be fingerprinted. I'm wondering, how long does it take to process the fingerprints? Because some of the subs in my building did not get fingerprinted yet. Also concerned about, I work in a very small building. We have three permanent substitutes that can come in at the drop of a hat. They all live close to the school. Will they be designated as our permanent substitutes? If somebody, anyone in the district, for example, their car breaks down, they get sick in the morning, they don't have time to call into Aesop, at least because I work in a very small building, we are able to call the subs personally and say, can you come in for me? Our permanent subs in our building, the three wonderful women, they know all of the children in the building. They know the way that each and every teacher and paraprofessional works in the building. And they can come in and really not have to have a lot of training on the job. Will we be able to continue to do that? And lastly, we already have some personal days listed on Aesop in June. Will they be honored by our current substitutes? Because nobody, at least in my building, has been hired yet through this new company.
Yeah, Dr. Early. Are you done with your questions?
Yes.
Comments? Okay.
Yeah, great. So, great questions. So, first of all, the, all of our substitutes that currently are employed by us are going to still work within the confines of the Edison School District. And the great piece about this outsourcing component is that we're actually able to pay them more and still have a cost savings to the district as well, too. The other piece of that is, we will have daily subs. Building principals will have say in that as well, too. So, I'm glad to hear that the ELC has daily subs. That's actually not the case in some of the other schools.
I know, I know.
You know, they call them their Fab Five. They usually show up every single day. Somebody that you can call at the drop of a hat when somebody gets sick. That process is going to be the exact same. The onboarding of substitutes has already taken place. It's seamless. The archiving of fingerprints has been done. We'll be, we'll be all set for rollout on June 1st. The last part of that is, Aesop will run exactly the same way that it has been in the past. People that currently have jobs will already have access to those positions. Nobody's going to be kicked off of a job. You're not even going to notice the transition between May 31st and June 1st. But the substitutes will, because they'll be getting an increase in pay.
Okay, because I hate to lose the subs that we have now.
Especially, especially the ones that are our residents right now. They're the fiber of what they do. We know that we can call them at the drop of a hat.
Right.
They've built relationships with not only the building principals, but the teachers, too.
Absolutely.
So, we want to make sure that that process is, that continues.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ross?
Good evening. Just a few things. You know, I have to get that, spread that what's great about Edison High. And we were so glad to be able to host this event tonight. And I think we're all glad that we have nice, comfortable new chairs to sit in for a nice, for a good, long meeting. And a couple things we have a saying, once an eagle, always an eagle. And we shouted out two of, you know, the legends of Edison, Ms. Gail Paulakowski and Mr. Andy D. Nicola, both of whom have roots here at 50 Boulevard of the Eagles. Mr. D. Nicola is a 1969 grad that came out of here. And Ms. Paulakowski cut her teeth in administration as a vice principal under the great Frank Cangelosi, the person our gym is named after. So, a lot of great things start here. And I wanted to kind of just shout out to the Board and do a thank you for expanding that intern program. One of the best parts about being a long-serving principal is your alumni comes back. And I had a kid from the class of 2017, and he wasn't an honor student. He had maybe one or two honor students over there. He had maybe one or two honors students over the course of his high school career, but he worked really hard. And he got put on back in 2016 as a technology intern. His name is Sabian Corret. He got put on, he helped us with the initial rollout of the MacBooks. And he was always walking around the school, able to sit there and help, you know, the teachers, the kids. Just really got involved, taught him a lot of leadership. Came back to see us this week. I have to look at what he told me he has, but he had, you know, because I missed the meeting Thursday, but people talked about leaving Edison, da-da-da-da. This is a young man that came here, got the benefits of the education, and ended up getting his Master's in Engineering from Rutgers University. And he's working, he got a Master's of Engineering in Electrical and Computer Engineering. Now he's an integrated circuit, integrated circuit design engineer for a microcircuit emulation center under SRI International in Princeton. And the nice thing about him, one, he's got this great job, didn't even take calculus when he was, he was at Edison. He just got a strong base of our Level One curriculum, moved on, did this, and he decided to buy the house in Edison. He's already gotten married, and he owns a house up on Grandview Avenue. And he's going to send his kids probably to the new James Monroe, to Herbert Hoover, and to Edison High School. So it's just, one, the internship program giving our youth opportunities for leadership, and showing how so many different people get their start in high schools like this and J.P. Stevens. So I appreciate everybody, and again, congrats to Ms. Polakowski on her retirement.
Thank you. Do we still have any, oh, the gentleman over there?
Good evening, Mayor, Madam Chair. Nick Fagan, 42, Edgewood Road in Edison. I come bearing news from the Edison Zoning Board, which also meets at the same exact time as you. They, tonight, denied unanimously the application for 401 Division Street.
Thank you.
The residents appreciate and thank you for your action in previous years and, and on this. And I implore you to maybe reach out to the owner and secure the stability of that property for the long term. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nick, just...
Any, Mr. She?
Nick, you know, I just want to let you know, there was something that, you know, you saw there was a letter sent to them, but there were also other activities that's done by the board regarding that, that, you know, property. I'm not going to talk about the details, but, you know, there are a lot of work that's done by the board for that property, just...
And, and I, Jerry, I thank you for that, and I appreciate the board's advocacy work in the community in general. And we, the residents appreciate your work on that behalf.
Thank you.
And, and the zoning board backed you up tonight. So figure a way out how to buy that property.
Thank you for your comments. No more first timers? Oh, yeah, the lady in Jean.
Good evening. This is again regarding the win period. My son, who is in 11th grade, in 2019, 2020, he had music and an elective comp science. And he had an AB scheduled throughout the year without a win period, or without reduced instructional time. It worked perfectly. I feel personally that we took something that worked perfect, and last year, for lack of a better word, we broke it. We broke it into an AB, half a year music, and half a year of theater elective. And both kids and educators suffered due to lack of continuity. And again, this year, I feel we put in a band-aid solution for something we broke last year, so that's just a concern. And I wanted to just share some facts, that something really worked in the, in the previous years. And my son's just in 11th grade.
Thank you.
Need a name for the record, I'm sorry.
Your name.
Anisha Rani.
Thank you. I forgot to comment on the previous comments that we, yeah, there, you, the gentleman talking about the financial, I want to say that we don't have any financial benefit for making this win period. Actually, we have to hire more foreign-language teacher to achieve that goal of having foreign-language program every day for the entire year. And there was, to your, the other question, there was no survey down to our middle school students. I think you might miss that with another survey. I was talk, talk about the biology. There's no survey down to all middle school students.
So let me add detail, the survey was done to middle schooler, but that was for a different purpose, not, not for this. It was done to the eighth grader for something related for the high school freshman year, not for this.
Right, so the information you were given was not accurate.
So, Madam President, you know, if you actually notice, if you go look at the agenda today, on this today's personnel agenda, you will see four Spanish teachers and one French teacher, okay? That is to expand this program. So whoever's told you that it's because budget cut, no. We actually spend more money to make the program better.
Okay, great, thank you. First, my apologies for not having introduced myself earlier, as per the protocol. My name is Ahmed Kumar, I'm a resident in, on Turner Avenue in Edison. It's been stated that we've not been given the fact, which goes on to embolden my claim that this board did not communicate effectively, okay? And to the extent when facts were asked why, on groups, it was still not provided, I still have, I still have the stuff that said that a survey was done. I still have information out here that what will the win period be used for? And some of the suggestions that came up, and I read, homework help, enrichment sessions, finishing group assignments, meeting counselors, okay? I don't see how any of them is not already being done, or cannot be done in, in the future. As I mentioned, it is, it is a spectrum. And I see one end of the spectrum, on the negative side, and the positive side, all these points could balance that. I do not say that win period is bad, okay? I say that all I want is not to take away from the instructional period of what is currently there. You got a problem wherein the trigger for this was some parents who came in and are saying that music and world class, or world language is important. I absolutely do not deny from that fact. I absolutely want to make clear as a fact that I do not deny that. There would have been other ways to, you know, skin the cat, okay? I don't say I have a solution, okay? I don't, if I think, probably I might, okay? Instead of three, instead of five music periods in a week, why not have five in two weeks period? I mean, some of the countries have done this for their employment, it works, okay? That's the other end of talking about it, but it might still work out here. The problem was of batch processing these electives. The solution is continuity, which you all have tried to address by reducing the period and having it every day. I do not deny the fact that you all have done brainstorming, but because of a, of a group of people coming and saying that music and world language is important, there is five other subjects which are also important, okay? And that is what my thing is of not being, not being against that, okay? Now, I feel, might be my personal feeling, that it's being a penalization for helping music and world language on the other five subjects. That's a thought. Probably you might, you know, have that thought, or, you know, converse with, sorry. Probably you might accept that thought process. The other thing that's also been mentioned is, and these are not, that the win period might, the parents need to volunteer in, for the win period, and do some sort of training and other things. And this was in a library meet that it was absolutely told to parents. My concern is all parents are working, or if not all, most of them are working. How do you expect someone on a working day to come out and to volunteer for such thing?
You don't.
Sorry, that's, that's another piece of wrong information. We don't expect parents to come to the school.
Sorry to, sorry to speak over you, but this was told in a library meeting in Edison, North Edison Library. Yeah, go for it.
Yeah, rather than go with the back and forth right here, listen, I, I think that there's an opportunity for us to more clearly communicate, not only the components of the schedule, but the rationale behind the change, too. And, and I would say that this is most certainly not the form for it, but you've definitely expressed your concerns. We've heard it loud and clear. Why don't we touch base after we conclude this meeting? And we can address those pieces. And I would also like to speak with, with you as well, too. I do thank you for your time, and I understand your passion, your advocates for your kids, and so are we, everybody up on here as well, so...
One parting comment?
It's up to the board president.
Sorry.
Unless you, yeah.
So I don't want to go away with the feeling that, you know, I have said something and it's fallen on deaf ears. I read a comment on a group, Group Seven, Grade Seven group. This is what BOE always does. They discourage parents from speaking if it goes against their wishes. No answer was given, everything was what we can speak on the side, seriously. These are our leaders, our kids are at mercy of. So just to conclude, I do not subscribe to this. I have a belief that if a change can be made, it will be made. As Anisha pointed out, something used to work a couple of years back, something got broken last year. We did a band-aid fix again this year. Probably we can do better, and that's my hope with this program. Thank you.
And so just my, my, thank you, thank you. And my closing comment, because I actually just had to ask Ms. Pang what a, what a Group Seven was. You're, you should direct all of your questions to the, to the leaders that are in the building. That is, that is where you should be getting your information from. And, and I'm actually looking forward to speaking with you once we conclude. It's great, good conversation, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Motion to close?
See now, motion to, and public comments?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Got a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you all, good night.
Good night.